We're starting right now. So, um, so again, Lisa and Christine, awesome job. I couldn't, couldn't say how pleased I am more, say more how pleased I am with everything that you've got here and, and how you made it, the detail and yet gave us a big overview and, and all of that. Um, and the end result of, and I think we even got a letter or two on, um, the fact that we weren't borrowing on the, uh, police, uh, station. So I think everything here is just, uh, incredibly good. And I, and also, uh, Wes, for you too, it's, I know, I, I know you helped guide, you know, at some point. So, you know, I appreciate everything that you guys did and, and go along. And I know all the council does too. Uh, to me, you made it real simple. Um, so, and you did do, um, an explanation of this in a big scope last time, and now we've got more detail and stuff. And so my suggestion is if there's a couple of the detail items that you think, hey, you guys ought to make sure you looked at, you, I'm sure you looked at them, but you might've overlooked it. Um, tell us that and then we'll open it up for questions for anybody here and suggestions or modifications or anything else that we have. Does that sound good?
That sounds good.
Does that sound good for you guys? Lisa and, okay.
So there hasn't been any major changes-
I feel like I'm BO with you over there.
From the last work session, there hasn't been any substantial changes. We did enter the July 20 actuals just for comparison and made some slight adjustments to some revenue that's annualized. The big piece that we're still waiting on is the assessed valuation from the county and we anticipate getting that in the next couple of days. And that will impact what our proposed budget that we bring to you on November 10th will look like. So that will impact revenue. Just to highlight the key areas again, this budget doesn't include any land sales. And I know we'll, we'll talk about the town owned properties later. No finance borrowing. Um, we did attach some additional detail on the town annual events because I know that was-
Hey Lisa, and my-
I'm sorry.
I only got one of my hearing aids. Could you put that closer to you, Mel?
Sure.
That's perfect. Yeah, it's much better. For me, it is.
And so we did include some additional detail on the 10, town annual events because I know that was a question that was brought up on the September 22nd work session. And we are on target to do the resident budget workshop on November 10th. Also, we're working on a presentation and, um, do some outreach to citizens and welcome them in, um, prior to the council meeting. So with that, I'll just open up, open up for questions.
Awesome. So I'll just go along the way. Lisa, you want to start us out?
Um, I don't know if I have specific questions I can think of right now, but I just want to reiterate what Mark said earlier. But thanks for, um, for me, it's super helpful to have that notes section kind of explain a little bit about what each piece, um, of the, the lines are. Um, so that was super helpful for, for this as well. Um, and I can't think of any general questions right now, but.
Rick?
Uh, general questions. We've got Don on there. And I don't know if this is where-
Yes, you got Don. He's on his-
Yeah, or you want to bring us up or not. Uh, what are we doing as far as snow plowing? If it starts snowing next week?
Uh, Will.
We left the, as I recall, we left last year where we were under a, a separate trial program, uh, to try to increase our snow plowing and seeing if we're going to continue that effort into next year. What's our plans?
Yeah, we are continuing all the, the trial areas. Uh, you know, we didn't, we really didn't get a, a great, uh, uh, let's just say chance to, to do that with enough snow. And so as far as we're concerned, we're continuing that, all those trial areas exactly the same as we did last year.
That's great. That's great. Uh, had another question here. I'd, I'd marked on my sheet on page one, uh, it doesn't include any land sales. And at some point, uh, I wanted to bring up that point, uh, especially regarding one or two of the properties in Old Town. Uh, it's still costing, I would remind the council, is my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, the numbers people, uh, a management fee every month on each of those properties. Whenever it snows, uh, we're talking not, uh, $50 or $35 for my neighbor's son to go and do it. It, we're paying like $500 for a snowfall to maintain them and that. Uh, I think it's, might be something we look at seeing. I know we had a, a party that was interested at one time in maybe putting a, uh, an insurance office, a commercial property under one of those. But that's on the sheet and I just wanted to raise the issue. Uh, so I've done that. Uh, third one, and might be to Don as well.
Hey Rick, I'll, I'll interject here. I think when we get to the properties, um, let's bring your interjection in again to, uh, talk about, okay?
Yeah. The third one was the, uh, I noticed that, uh, there's a fee and it's in our capital budget, uh, for the wells, uh, two wells. Uh, and we're going to permit two wells for water for our use, non-potable water. Uh, and it's a pretty good sizable fund, uh, amount. Uh, I thought the first well was pretty, pretty bad. Are, is both of them now producing enough to warrant going forward with two, or is, did I miss something?
No, you, you, you got it right. We, uh, the first well did not produce what we expected. The second well produced, uh, as, as much as we hoped for, maybe a little bit more. And, uh, and the two of them are, are, are for sure enough. And so we're, we're, we believe we're in a good place to move forward with, uh, enough water to, to take care of, uh, the, the turf area we have and then some.
Let's frac it.
And hey, and Rick, um, the, the dollars involved in that and stuff, we're going to talk to at length later on 7A in the agenda.
That's good. I just-
Yeah, no, I just, just see you.
Okay, that's all I've got on that.
And then if I can make a comment on the land sale, I, I think council appreciates this. So for conservative purposes, we didn't show that revenue. You'll be appropriating the actual expenditures. So should the council decide with its discussion later today and in future discussions that there are properties or a property that's sold, that will just go into the revenue and go into the bottom line.
Great. Thanks for the clarification. Brett?
Um, one thing to, to piggyback on Rick's point that might be interesting from a numbers perspective would be to, to have an idea of what, what the cash flow is with the properties we own, or which ones are costing us property month to month and which ones we're leasing out and getting some kind of, uh, revenue from. Just, um, for future reference, that might be a useful data point. Um, I did have one, uh, specific question on a budget item that I just caught my eye. Um, line 147 in Public Safety, General Office and Administration, 2020, we budgeted $326,000. The previous year was $13,000 and next year is $34,000. Uh, I was just curious why, if, if we had an idea why that was such an outlier with what we budgeted and what we actually spent in previous years and this year and next year.
Yeah, good question. So originally with the 2020 adopted budget, we had included, well, one, we assumed that the PD facility, new PD facility would be constructed and we included in that line item, $300,000 for furniture.
Okay.
We've now included it as part of the capital outlay line. So it'll just be part of the 11 some million dollars that Elise is a placeholder for the new facility.
Okay. Yeah, I figure it's something with the, the police building. Um, and then yeah, just, just to again, reiterate that, that I think this was, this budget's really great. It's, it's really helpful, really readable. Um, I'm glad that we still have the, the resident workshop coming up, uh, next month. Um, I don't, I don't know if we have a communications plan in place on that yet, but okay, great. Um, be good to just give people some notice on that. And that's all I have initially.
And believe it or not, I only have one thing. And that is, uh, in our, um, uh, roads, uh, budget, there's $5 million for, um, the road from, uh, Bus Grove, basically from County Road 5 to, um, County Road 13. And here's what I'd like to check. I'd like us to asterisk that. The first half of that makes tons of sense. From County Road 5 to, um, Don, help me. What's the road there on, uh?
Biden's Gate.
Out of Harmony, Bidens Gate.
Biden's Gate.
Thank you. So from 15 to Bidens Gate, that one's just dangerous. There's curves on it and everything else that goes on. From Bidens Gate to County Road 13, and I drive that road, uh, probably one, once a day if you count two or three times once and zero a couple of times. So, and I don't ever have to look right because there's never any traffic coming down that way. And so my suggestion is that we do a traffic count on that first. And I, before we start spending any time and energy on that, my suggestion is that you come back to the council for it if the, uh, rest of people feel. And let me tell you the reasons I'm saying that. One is I don't see traffic there. Two, it's a straight shot. The road's pretty good shape and it's straight shot. Three, there's, the people in Wildwing appear to go over to Prospect and down or over to Mulberry and not too many come to Bus Grove because it's sort of in the middle. They'll either keep going down 13 till they get to Harmony, or they'll go over to Prospect. So that road is a big outlet road for Harmony and eventually will be for Landings. But I don't see it being an outline. And I'm not a traffic engineer and I'm not at all trying to suggest that. But what I am saying from just observation as a layperson is let's do some traffic counters on that road before we go incur, let's, probably the bottom part of that is the most expensive. But before we incur a million and a half or 2 million for that one straight strip, let's, uh, um, wait on that until we actually have some traffic on it.
Um, so I can let Don weigh in. Um, my, uh, my perspective would be that we allow the funds to sit in your, your CIP fund and to the extent that they are a part of your 2021 budget appropriations, we leave them there. But before we proceed at all in any way, shape or form, we would need to bring back and have a very robust, uh, discussion with council, find out, um, you know, just what are the issues around that. It's our job to collect data. So Don and his team would be collecting data on that. And then hopefully we can have a good, good substantive discussion about some part, all or nothing of that and, and how to proceed. But-
And that's totally what I'm suggesting too. I do not want to remove the 5 million there.
Sure.
But what I would like to do is have a little asterisk or something there that we all put it as a placeholder that step back. Don, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, I sure can. And, uh, and yeah, uh, we will do that for sure. We'll get some counts on both sides of Biden and understand that. Our intent is to bid this before the end of the year in total. So we have an understanding and, and we can build it with an alternate so that we understand if it was, if we just did, let's say the west half or the east half, what the numbers are. And then we could understand what the economies of scale are for us there. Cause it, it is, I understand exactly your comment, Mark. Uh, but at some time we have to build it. And, and so we, we just need to understand what, uh, what the economics are of doing it today versus, you know, let's say a year, two years from now.
And I, and I agree with that too.
So, so we'll, we'll bid it. We'll get the numbers. All of that's got to come back to the council. By then I'll have traffic counts for, uh, both directions and we can revisit it again before it's awarded.
Awesome. Is everybody okay with that? Okay. I, the only other thing that, that I'd like to mention is Christine, I know this is your last budget of helping us and uh, also getting Lisa up to speed. So I, on behalf of the whole council, would like to thank you for all the great work you've done over the years and, um, wish you a great retirement when it gets there. You're welcome. All right. So-
Don't forget to-
Oh, I'm sorry. Do I have a-
I don't know if Aaron had anything.
Aaron. Oh, sorry, Aaron.
It's okay.
You're, you know, you've been losing weight. I can't, I know, I just totally lost you. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Aaron. I, without you sitting next to me, I don't know what to do.
So I, I reiterate what you say about Christine. Thank you. You've been an awesome, um, member of our team for, for many years and we appreciate your service. You will, you'll be missed. Um, but on the budget, my, my question is, uh, on the event planning, um, why we're planning in 2021 to put things, every, every one of them on a smaller scale compared to prior years. I mean, I don't remember having any discussion over this.
I, I actually had the same question too. I don't know if it's Wes' question or Elisa' question, or is it something we should ask Kim when she comes in? So-
She's right there.
Oh, so, yeah.
We're glad you asked that because we did want to spend a little bit of time and talk through those reductions to make sure that that is something that council is, um, agreeable to and/or are there any modifications to what's being proposed here? So Kim, do you want to, so your very last, uh, large 11 by 17 in the first tab reflects 2019 actuals, what was originally budgeted for 2020, the estimated 2021. And right behind it is an additional, um, schedule that Kim had prepared. So maybe Kim, if you want to kind of walk us through and kind of the thought process.
So before you get going, let's just make sure we keep our procedure set. I'm fine with talking about this now. And Aaron, if you look at 8A on the agenda, I think it was the intent of, of you, um, Jill, tell me if I'm wrong, to come back in and, um, and talk about all of those items, but maybe not from a budget standpoint. I said, Joe, Kim, sorry, Kim.
That's okay.
Um, so do you guys want to talk about it now or later? Or Aaron, would you like to talk about it now or-
It doesn't matter. We can talk about it now or later. Um, it-
I think I'd just soon talk about it now.
Let's talk about it.
Okay, everybody else is saying nodding too. So, and good question, Aaron. I had, I actually had the same question. I just didn't ask it.
I think probably to start the conversation, I would ask for a little direction from council. So, um, from a staff perspective, what we tried to do is scale back and really focus on what we need to do and not what we want to do. And so events is one of those gray areas where they can be considered, um, a critical component to how we create community or they can be considered an expense that's a little bit harder to justify. And so what we wanted to do when we started looking at this process is do a gut check with council really to talk about why do we do events and how much money are you comfortable allocating toward that goal? When we did events in the past or when we planned for events in the past, we really looked at them in twofold. One is to create community, right? Bring people together. But the other was also to market Timnith as a destination, um, to bring people in who perhaps had not been familiar with the community, to give them a taste of what it's like, um, with the intention of kind of showing off a little bit and putting us on the map. The overall sentiment I've heard from this council is we really want to pare that down or at least stay focused on events are designed for Timnith residents to create community, to really, um, create a safe and welcoming space for families and residents, and then also to support our local businesses and organizations. So I guess that would be my first gut check for this conversation.
Great. And let's, let's stop right there and do it. Cause I think it's a good question because it's not my understanding of what the council's directed to, Kim. So, um, so it's, is a twofold question. A, do we want to reach out to other communities to bring them in here? And two, do we want to pare down our internal? And actually this time I'll start off. I, I see no value in bringing people into Timnith. People know Timnith. It's not like, I mean, for the amount of advertising to go outside of Timnith for an event, it is the bang for the buck has to be zero. That, so that's one thing. But as far as pairing down, I'd rather see us stay solid with our events and, and we really focus on building a community and, and make it so that people look forward to, and I think they do. I've had five or six people already asked me about the holiday party and the tree lighting and that. So there's a lot of people in the community that really look forward to that. Hey, who's running our, it looks like we lost, uh, Aaron. Did he do it?
He might have.
Okay.
I don't see him in the meeting anymore.
You know, internet in the neighborhood's not always that great. Just throwing that out there.
Friday, poor Melissa.
I'm sure he'll be back.
Okay. Should we keep going with the discussion then? Okay. So, so my two bits is I'd hate to see us, here he comes back. Aaron, can you hear us? Okay. So we're talking about, did you hear that she asked the question to the council? And I'll let you say it again so you can say it in your words and let Aaron hear it.
I wanted to confirm that the goal of our community events is really about bringing Timnith residents together to create a sense of community and create, um, you know, safe and welcoming environment and support businesses, schools and nonprofits in Timnith as opposed to marketing Timnith to others outside of our community as a destination.
And then your second part was-
Would you like to fund that?
Were we pairing down our events? And so I started it out, uh, Aaron, I think you lost. Did you hear what I was saying?
I did not.
Okay. So I said, I, I don't see any value to us trying to bring people into Timnith. The Fort Collins people, the Greeley people and that. I don't, I don't see that as a return on the buck that anybody in, uh, the Timnith residents would want. That said, I don't want to pare down our events. I want to build community, build Timnith, uh, camaraderie. Uh, and, and as I said before, you know, I think people really look forward to the holiday decorations and the tree lighting and they definitely look forward to the 4th of July. And so I, I'd hate to see us pare down those. I think what I'd, I'd, I'd like is a refocus of focus on Timnith and our community and, and team building in the community, not trying to reach out and be maybe something we're not. Uh, anybody who want any other comments there? I know you do. So go ahead, Rick.
Yeah. The, uh, I agree with what the mayor and what Aaron is saying, but I'd look at it a little, little differently in terms of, we've already committed to the fireworks for next year, which is great. Hopefully we'll be able to have some kind of holiday lighting event. And then the cleanup day, the one that was added, it was more successful than the one in the spring. And I think we'll get, that'll continue to grow, uh, bigger and better every time. And the way I see it, that's more junk that doesn't end up in somebody's dumpster or out in the, uh, uh, construction site. Uh, we get tremendous amount of people just driving in, uh, around new houses and throwing things into the dumpsters.
Could I ask a question spinning off of what he's commenting on is, so I see actual for the cleanup is 15,000. I assume that's for one and the fall didn't get in there yet. So if we would look at actual this year, it'd be like 31 or 32 and you guys are estimating 40 for next year.
Turn to the next page.
Over to the right. We're estimating 40,000 for 2020.
Yeah, sort of-
And you're right for two.
Piggyback on that. Then what I, uh, looked at was maybe trying to put a lump sum figure in because again, we don't know what's going to be taking place in the spring or the summer of next year. Although the World Health Organization today said it looks like this thing's decreasing, not increasing, even though the numbers are going up. I tried to figure that one out. But I, I said, maybe it'd be smarter just to try to figure out how to have a placeholder number, number and then be able to work with, uh, Kim, others to say, yep, I think we can go with some concerts. Uh, how do we go about getting this? And maybe we won't get quite the level of talent we've had in the past, but we'll still be able to have a placeholder number in that kind of thing. So what I had done is put in the placeholder number for cleanup days, two of them next year, again, a spring and a fall at 40. The fireworks, we've got it 175. And then you've got, uh, the Taste of Timnith, holiday lighting and other events. Uh, and just, I combine those into one and say, let's just have a placeholder number and say those are for other events. And as this thing breaks or doesn't break, we'll be able to revisit that number. And I'm sure that you and others in the community will say, why aren't we holding these concerts? Kind of thing. And we've got a number there in the, in the box. Done.
Um, I agree as well, as far as, I wouldn't want to see them cut back. Um, and I was actually thinking related to the town cleanup day, I'm sure this probably costs more money. But if we could add maybe something where we take, um, whether it's electronics or hazardous materials or something like that as well, old paint. Um, cause I know a lot of people try to dispose of those. People throw them in the trash when they shouldn't. Um, so maybe even expand a little bit on that. Um, I went to both of them this year to get rid of stuff. So, um-
Lisa, correct. So this is my nativity, night, whatever that word is. Um, I thought that, that Trash Day was for electronics and for paint also. It's not?
No.
No, not hazardous materials.
No, they've had donations, recyclables, trash, mattresses. Um, I think that was, uh, grass clippings and yard waste.
That's probably a little bit of a direction. Can I look, I'm going to look at everybody and nod or shake your head. I, I think that's a great addition of-
And I don't know how much it costs though. So I have to, I have to admit that. I'm thinking there would be a cost involved.
How about if we direct Kim to look into that before our next cleanup day?
Yeah, I, I would, I mean, if everyone's on board with that, but we could also like, Rick was saying, lump a few things together.
Aaron, yeah.
Yeah, we could also lump a few things together so that we have a little bit of, um, of leeway with that. But I, I agree. If, if we originally had 225 for the fireworks, I don't know that we would want to cut it back if we're able to have it next year, knowing that we may not be able to. But if we're able to have it, I feel like we should probably, we would probably want to go back to at least the scale we had before.
Yep. So Kim, the, one of the things somewhere along on one of these budgets, it looked like we cut back on the fireworks, the actual fireworks, not by much, but a little bit. And if anything, and again, I'd like to throw this to the group, you know, if we're at, um, fireworks of, what was it? 80, 75?
Yeah, roughly. I can't remember.
I think we scheduled the same show as last year. We saved because they don't have to re-choreograph it.
Because what?
They don't have to re-choreograph it. It's the same show as that they did last year is what we're doing, I believe.
So are we getting more fireworks, same fireworks or less?
Same show, same music, same-
It's my understanding, the reason the price difference there is it was going to be a totally different event with a concert and with activities going on and beer and wine and stuff like that. Those were all cut out. If we think we're going to have that next year, if we put a lump sum budget together, you can always uncartwheel some of those funds in.
And I'd, and I like to put a lump sum, but one of the things that Kim needs direction on is they order those fireworks now.
They've already done.
We've already approved that. It's done.
Yeah.
But it's already done? Nothing we can do about it?
No.
Nope. And, but we say, we saved, I think it was like 12,000 or something?
Yes, a little bit of money.
Or 1,200 or something because we want the same show as last year.
All right.
And I don't think people are going to have memorized the show. I think it'll be okay.
I have.
All right. Good deal. Uh, Brett?
Um, I guess just to make sure, I understood, I understood, uh, some of the, I, I generally echo the sentiment of, of not feeling the need to, to make large cuts to the events. Um, but just to make sure I had an, an idea of what you were thinking. So I know where we're getting the, the value there. Uh, so with the Taste of Timnith, we went from 125 to 60. What, what would be the change in the actual event with something like that?
And this is true for a lot of the events. So what we lose is a bit of that ambiance piece, right? So we lose the, the kids' activities and the performers and Taste in Timnith in particular, we lose free food.
Okay.
And those type of things. And that would be true for the cuts that we make to, um, 4th of July, right? So to your point, Councilmember Locke, there'd be, um, the fireworks and that's kind of, you know, and that would be it.
So is most of the, most of the activities that are actually part of the event are be-
So we would pare down to, I mean, I don't want to say bare bones because that makes it not sound fun. It would still be fun and it would still be lovely, but it would not, um, but it would be less character perhaps in years past.
Um, yeah, I would, I would echo what others have said in terms of us wanting to have those activities. And I think the town playing together goes a long way towards building that sense of community. Um, one, one, I guess, question I had, uh, on your event strategy page. Um, so you, so you rated each event with a, with a metrics. And, and again, the cleanup day, I know it's popular and, uh, nice, but I'm a little confused by how cleanup days meets, uh, the maximum score on meets goals of fostering sense of community and supporting businesses and schools. the maximum score on meets goals of fostering sense of community and supporting businesses and schools. I don't, I don't totally understand.
So I'll explain the logic a little bit. Again, it ain't a science, friends. We have to be honest about that.
Right.
Sense of community, kind of, you know, hey, we're all keeping our town clean and making it look nice and we're all working together.
Okay.
Right? So creating a self and welcoming space. Nobody wants to look like my driveway right now where there's trash everywhere and stuff's blowing around and, you know, creating maybe an unsafe environment. And then the last one is, we work with donation centers. So a lot of the stuff that's brought to the cleanup event is not thrown out, it's actually donated. And so we're supporting nonprofits. So that's why if you met all three of those goals, you got a five.
Okay.
I told you.
Again, I think the event's great, I just thought it was a generous application of the, of the definition. Okay, thank you.
She worked with Brian on how they do their allocation.
And Brian's like, just put some numbers in there.
I was saying, so that means like a dartboard with you blindfolded?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, okay. All right, hey, Aaron, your chance.
Okay, so I agree with you all that, that I don't think we should be cutting back. Since we didn't have events this year, we're looking at, let's say, 2019 numbers. And the town has probably grown, what, 10, 15% since, since 2019, if not more. So if anything, I think we need, we need to at least be where we were before because there's going to be more people. I don't mind the idea of keeping it, trying to keep it more Timneth, Timneth Central, like perhaps with the Taste of Timneth, having to show your ID, hey, I'm a Timneth resident, and then you get to eat and do that. I, I, I know how many times we hear from residents over the years that that's one of their favorite parts about Timneth. And coming from a Realtor standpoint, when I sell houses here, people talk about this. You know, I, I've been to one of these things before and this, this town is great to, to foster that community. And also, if you look on the page previous to that single page on the budget, we're, we're also now adding an event planner and a photographer into that budget. It's going to be in that budget. So that reduces the actual budget numbers further down. That's it.
Okay.
Can I follow up with a couple of questions then?
Oh yeah, absolutely.
So in 2019, you could see on, on that page, that 11 by 17 sheet, the town had spent 565,000. What I believe we were hearing is we want to at least keep to that level. And Aaron is right, the population has grown. So I guess that's our first question or direction. We want to make sure we're clear on, what would you like the 2021 total appropriation to be? So right now, and it was with that philosophy of sharpening our pencils, right, for discretionary spending? And that's why some of these cuts were made. But what we're hearing is, we want a larger appropriation for town events. So let me pause there and ask, what is that total aggregate amount?
So I did a little math here while we were going through, no surprise. Taste of Timneth, we're down 65. Is that free food or is that other things too?
Other things too.
Okay. Cause I don't believe in giving away free food from a town. I, you know, for the five bucks, let's, let's support our, our food trucks and the other people that are in here and have, let them set up things and, and sell to the, the population on it. But then holiday decorations, by the time we get to next Christmas, I hope this stupid COVID thing's over. And so, you know, to me, we ought to be going back 35 or 40,000 from what you have budgeted on there. Fireworks, who knows? But maybe what we do is we just put like 100,000 as sort of an asterisk of, hey, if we can get, if we can do the events and have the kid events and everything at some of these things, let's give ourselves the leeway to do it, but not to go on. So I don't know if I'd go full up to the 565, but I think if we added another 150, which gets us to 500, that covers the stuff I've been hearing from everybody, but I don't know. But then I want to ask you something, Christine or Lisa, is, do we, do we still stay positive if we increase this 150?
Yeah, we would still stay positive. It's obviously going to eat into our unrestricted fund balance, not much. There are other changes though, that are going to be made. As Lisa mentioned, we're going to get the preliminary assessed valuation. We're going to have to see how that jives with the assumptions that we use. So we'll go ahead and make these changes. You're going to see yet another draft November 10th and then yet another draft December 8th. So what I hear is.
Beat it around pretty good. I mean, you guys, you know, I'm going to just do a head. If, if, what I heard you guys say and what I added up is 500, a good number to throw in there for everything? And then we'll split it up later?
I'm good, I'm good with that.
Okay, how?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, looks like we're fine with that, so. So thanks.
You're welcome.
Kim, is there anything else?
The only other thing I had, which was on the council agenda, would be to talk about the replacement for our holiday light, but that's a money allocation, so we'll leave that for council. And the other stuff is just updates, which I'm happy to give now, or I can also give later. I don't know if it matters. Now you're going to make me do it by memory, which is horrible. In your packets.
So by in the packet, you mean this one?
Yeah, 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 your actual council packet. Two things that I just think are really exciting. One is the Fall Cleanup Day, as you mentioned, Mayor Pro Tem was a huge success. And there's some stats on there on exactly how much we collected and what happened. But long story short, bigger than the spring event. And so certainly I think it's in everyone's best interest to do that twice a year and I'm really excited for that. And the second update in that piece, or excuse me, in that memo, it's just an update on the website process. What we wanted to do is just let you know that we're going to elongate that process a little bit in order to give ample time to staff and council to give us some feedback and make sure that we have time to vet that with staff along the way. And so lucky you, you don't have enough to do in budget season. This will be your season now through the end of the year. I'd love to sit down with each of you one-on-one and just get some thoughts and feedback on the site itself. We're going to use that information to sit down with staff, talk it through with them. What do they need, what's working, what's not? And then actually start to go through the design and development process. So instead of it launching in March, it's probably going to, I can't remember the exact date in there. I think I said May, but I didn't want you to be surprised by that. And also, we know that it's a really busy season for you as council members, also holidays. So we want to make sure that we give ourselves enough time. Those are the only two informational items in that. And then we'll talk about the holiday lighting reallocation at the council meeting.
Do we need, can we do that now too?
Well, I was just going to say, if you're okay with it, I think we can have the conversation now.
Cause this is a public meeting, right?
That's correct.
So it'll let you get leave earlier.
Wow, this is great. Okay, let me find everything though, because this one I don't have in my memory. And so if you'll recall, we had a conversation with Colorado Youth Outdoors to talk about sponsoring portion of their lighting event. What a wonderful group of people. First I have to say, they've just been so lovely to work with. And what they have been able to offer us is for a sponsorship of, okay, now I have to find it real quick. $25,000. What we can do is mail a postcard to every single Timneth household with a link and a registration code to purchase their ticket into this lighting tour. Let me say this first, it's going to be very cool and I don't want to reveal the amount of money that they spent on it because I'm not sure they'd be comfortable with that, but it's going to be really, really nice. It's going to be, I think, about a 15-minute experience and they're doing all of their ticketing online. So they're trying to make it as, as contactless as possible. You go, you register, you pay $20 per car, you get a QR code, show it when you get to the gate and off you go. So they're really trying to do a good job of staying within COVID guidelines as well. What they've offered us is an opportunity to create an individual registration code for each Timneth household that when they plug it in, Timneth residents would not have to pay. So they would get to schedule their time, they get their ticket, they can go anytime during the display that they signed up for and enjoy it as part of the sponsorship from the town. So what they're asking is that we pay for, let me see exactly here. Essentially, if we do 1,500 tickets at $20 each, that would be, they're giving us kind of a deal. For $25,000, they would also include all the ticketing costs that go with that. So they have to pay administrative fees for, you know, the, the backend of the system. But what they're saying is essentially we'd get the first 1,500 tickets for Timneth residents for our $25,000 sponsorship.
So let me, let me help out a couple, fill in a couple blanks that make more sense too. So there's households in Timneth, there's 1,900, I mean, houses as such. So not all of them are going to show up. And so that's one thing about it. The second thing, and, and Kim alluded, one of my good friends is the director of CYO. And so she called and she was all excited and she was telling me some things. And, and they got a substantial donor who's also one of my good friends. And that substantial donor gave significant money. I mean, this, this light show ought to be off the chart. I mean, it'll be comparable to or greater than our fireworks display. And so it's, they really got, they've spent a ton of time, ton of effort on this. And I think it's cool that we can, for 25,000, I didn't know what the number was going to be, but 25,000, let anybody in Timneth have a free pass through here and see it. And then with it being electronic, it'll be real easy for people and it'll help them because then you're not going to have a big handing over money and stuff like that. But it's much cheaper than our holiday lighting. And if it's anywhere near the excitement level I heard from my friend, it'll be really, really special. So just input, just FYI.
Can I jump in?
Yeah, go.
I, I, I like the idea very much since we can't do the festival. And I think a $25,000 donation to them would be well worth what, what we're getting back. I mean, I, I'm actually surprised we're getting so much for that, for that donation. The one thing though, since there is a little bit of room still in our budget, although we're not going to have a tree lighting festival with all the hoopla, I would still like to see the lights in Old Town up though. So I don't know if, if that was sort of just a foregone conclusion that we would still have those lights? Or is that something we should discuss, I guess?
As I look around the room, everyone's nodding their head like they thought it was a foregone conclusion there.
Okay. I, I just wanted to make sure that, because it's so nice driving through there, you know, in the evening time, having all those lights up. It's, it just is very festive and that might drive a little more traffic to people, to those businesses that have, the people that have businesses down there.
How, how, how much does it cost to put up those lights, do you know, Kim?
Hey, Don, I think that's your department.
Don, Public Works Director, could you tell us how much it costs to put up?
Pardon?
I said 12,200.
Oh. Oh, you know for a fact?
I'm just going off my memory.
$1.
I'll tell you, going off of my memory, it's less than 15. All right.
We, we budgeted 15 for the holiday decorations. Is that essentially what that's for is? Okay. And so then the 25 would be on top of that, which would be under the 85 that was originally in the budget for our, the holidays. Okay.
Go, Rick.
I think it, it sounds great. I'd support it, but I'd also, if we're going to send this postcard out saying, you know, Lisa, you and your families can go and get the ticket and the whole works. Can we add maybe a paragraph in there and somebody start throwing stuff at me? Asking people if they would like to donate, they can donate as well to that organization.
It's a great idea.
Yeah, absolutely. I like that, Rick.
And have a process where they can either donate when they get, they ask for it or donate when they show up at the gate.
That's great, absolutely. That's easy.
Cause this is a fundraiser for.
The Taste of the Town, we ask for a donation at every vendor. And I think we've raised, you know, sizable amount of money at that because the free food is free. So why not? And if we can get them a little more money, that's a great deal.
Any more, Lisa, do you have any more?
No, I'm just, I'm just really excited because, you know, we used to go to the Woodward Governor one when they had it and then that one closed that one down. So I think, I think it's a, a great idea and hopefully people will actually take advantage of that if we can spread the word well.
Yeah.
When they told me about this, I thought that's, I said, it's just like Woodward Governor. Everyone else looked at me with a blank face, so it's nice to hear you.
Oh yeah, they used to have that you would just drive right through and, and that.
I mean, I drove it as a kid. Drove it as an adult and drove it as a parent. Okay, Kim, anything else you'd like from us?
That's all I have today. Thank you.
Can I, can I add just, just one comment? First, first, I'm excited for the Christmas thing too. And then just, just a general thought to put out there as we're planning events over the next year and two. Just one of the things that I think I particularly enjoy about the Taste in Timneth is, is the 5K event and those kinds of things where we actually do get to play together, compete together, whatever. So those kinds of things might be an interesting element to start to include in some of these town events. Whether it's, you know, a cornhole tournament or just something like that. And I don't think that would cost a lot of money to, to organize something like that. And I think people would enjoy activities like that.
Wonderful.
So, thank you.
All right, thanks, everyone.
I don't think we got, I think we're all good. Okay, I think we talked the budget, I think we talked the events. So let's go to TDA draft budget.
Mayor, if you don't mind if I just.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Might make a couple more comments. So in this packet, obviously stuff for public works, public safety, parks, planning, recreation. So staff's here, we tried to do our best to write up a narrative that talks about, you know, what our goals were this year, what we did this year, what our goals are for next year, if we're asking for, you know, increases or decreases or more staff or less staff. So staff's ready and willing to answer questions if you have them, but we did our best to try to map that in the narrative. So my first question is, is there any other feedback to that or any other questions for any of the department heads to their respective areas?
I just have one comment. I very much appreciate the narrative. It really helps. Sometimes you get tired of just looking at the numbers. So the narrative definitely puts a little bit more of a picture to what the numbers actually represent. So I really liked that.
That's good feedback, that helps our budget books.
Yeah, I think everybody who would have had a comment already commented on that, Wes.
All right, and then the only other question I have is with respect to the town's compensation benefits. Any questions around any of the compensation or any of the benefits? You know, in the past, we've used 3%. This budget has 1.5. I just want to make sure the council, that's still your direction to pursue that? Or would you like to amend that up or down?
I saw it and I didn't have a comment, go ahead.
I have a question on that. I, you know, I've thought about what you're talking about and you're talking about, I think you said 32,000.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And you said that some people might get a little more and some people might get a little less. I always sort of had a problem with that with the state government. If you're going to go and cut the budget to where they're only getting a one and a half percent, I think it should just be across the board instead of trying to go through a, a process of some win and some lose. This is, a lot of towns in our, in our area are actually having furlough days.
Right.
And luckily, because of the two vendors that are in town, the two major vendors, we don't have to do that. So instead of put the staff through an exercise of saying, here's 32,000, figure out how you're going to divide it up, I would much rather see just one and a half percent, to be honest with you. And then if that doesn't work, I would say, then maybe you add like 10,000. So people that are in charge in these departments, if they see a real discrepancy kind of thing, where one and a half percent of a higher salary is a lot more than one and a half percent of a line worker, maintenance worker. Maybe you put in a few thousand dollars into a pool where you can sort of reward somebody with a 0.25 or something. That kind of deal.
You're kind of hitting at the core of it. What we're trying to do is, is compress both the market, you know, as you know, inflation versus how do we have conversations around merit and contribution? And 1.5 is a tough, tough line to get under. So if the council's amenable to it, we can certainly head down a path where we just use a flat line, 1.5, basically treat it like a cola. But we would like to have some funds set aside so to either tackle inequity issues if we find them or to address performance issues as well. So, but ultimately, that's the council's call. If you want to take the 32 and add, and then give us 10 in a pool so we can address equity issues or merit issues. so we can address equity issues or merit issues, we're certainly willing to do that. And I think you have the budget for it. It's the council's decision.
I brought it up and I, I think it's, it's a good idea. I wouldn't have brought it up as far as I know, trying to manage people and that. It's, it's one thing for the, the people that are getting good salaries.
Sure. Yes, sir.
But for the other ones that are just scraping by, I know one and a half. But if everybody's doing it and there's not a furlough in that, is there a way to sort of recognize, now it's a tremendous amount?
No, right, understood.
It's more of the saying, you know, I was the least respected enough to, they brought this up, kind of deal.
And Rick, I brought it up at the last meeting as well.
Yes, ma'am, you did.
So I'm, I'm on the same page as you where it, I, I'm used to, in my past experience, as always, you get that baseline cost of living at, you know, the, the new year. And then there's a different bucket for merit when it's warranted. So whether that's at the same time or whether that's at annual reviews, which might be at different times, whatever. But I like Rick's idea of, I, I don't know what that correct number is, but something.
Okay. Any other thoughts or input? Sorry.
Yeah, I've got a little input. Rick and Lisa, I really, I appreciate the comments. And from a public works perspective, you know, I think we've got, you know, exactly what you're talking about, Rick. And, and so one and a half doesn't, doesn't feel like much to some of the folks we have there. And so to have that flexibility going forward into 21, I think is going to be a big deal for us, for sure. That's all I got.
So we need, so we need a number.
Yeah, I can give you a number. Aaron, on your committee for the COVID, I think we talked about 50,000 and you ended up spending about 40,000?
Not even. I think we spent 25 for the businesses and then 10 for the school.
So that's 35. So even if we throw out a figure between eight and 10,000 for a merit pool. But I don't want to have to look at this thing when all of a sudden we see the high-end people got those, the big chunks. If you understand what I'm talking about. Do you guys have a number?
10 is fine. We can certainly set aside 10. And I think, like you said, the intent is to take care of our frontline employees. So it gives us the ability to do that.
So let's go with eight.
I agree with what Spencer said.
Okay. All right. We'll add eight.
All right, moving on. TDA budget, Lisa or Christine?
Okay, I just wanted to make one last comment on the town budget and the timeline in your packet. It said that they, we would have the public hearing on November 10th. And we're actually going to have the first reading and a presentation on November 10th and the public hearing on December 8th with the adoption then. So just, we should make that change to the timeline. The draft TDA budget is attached. Again, here we're waiting for the assessed valuations from the county. There's fewer lines in here. It includes all the principal and interest payments for the TDA, the capital improvement projects, and then transfer to the town for any excess revenue that's not needed to cover the debt per the agreement. And I'll open it up for questions if there are any.
Aaron? 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 Any comment?
No, not right, not right this second. I'm looking at it right now.
Just making sure you're awake, Aaron.
Yep, I am.
Why he's waiting. I'll go ahead and make a comment.
Do you have a comment?
Yeah, on the TDA budget.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm still going to voice my objection to, I still get real heartburn of us transferring monies to the town general fund. And if we do transfer them, I know that Lisa and others are going to make sure that we account for those monies where they're going, once they're transferred over here.
Is there somewhere else you'd rather have that money go than transferred to the town general fund?
Well, yeah, it could go maybe if you didn't transfer to the town, we would make the payments for the, this building, for instance.
So, so quicker debt payments is what you would suggest instead of the town?
Yeah, because it goes, it basically goes in, it feeds into revenue stream for the town. As you can see, it grows every year. Until 2029, that revenue stream and Kristin will share with us, at that point, the sales tax all drops in our laps. And hopefully that cliff doesn't create a cliff. Hopefully it's a smooth transition after 2029.
So if you take a look at line four, I think it will just kind of illustrate it. Revenues in 2021 for the TDA for sales tax TIF, next year projected at 7.150. Everyone see that? And then this transfer, the general transfer, we're not talking about the loan proceeds, is what's reflected on row 18. And you see it basically, essentially the same number. So this, once again, is really the town's 3% that's shared with the TDA. And if the TDA does not in any given year need it for the loan repayment, it gets transferred back to the town. So it's, we're recognizing it pursuant to the URA plan in the TDA, but then it gets transferred or swept back if it's not needed. So it's.
So it's our money anyway.
It's our money anyway. And it's, as you can see, and this is how the loans were underwritten, that the TIF sales tax, which is our money anyway, would not really be needed to repay the loan. So in 2029, what's going to happen is this 7,150, let's just say that was the projected sales tax TIF in 2029. We're just going to recognize that directly into the town.
Okay.
I do not believe there's any cliff.
Okay. So, so kind of, I guess, to speak to Rick's point, the question would be, would we ever in the future perceive a value in trying to pay off debt faster? Or just continuing to collect the sales tax revenue that we would be collecting with or without the TDA?
Certainly, when the, when the call protection years come up and for the 2015 loan, that's going to be at the tail end of 2022. That will be something that Lisa will be discussing with council. Hey, versus sweeping it back, do we want to go ahead and start paying this down early?
Could we make that payment from town funds or TDA funds if we decided we wanted to pay debt down earlier? Does it have to come out of these TDA funds?
No, it certainly could come out of, the council could say, we want to transfer money from the town to the TDA to even pay down more absolute.
Okay. I'm not advocating a course right now, just I'm trying to understand our options there. So, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Okay. Working reserve policy, Lisa.
So this is the updated working reserve policy. It used to be called the unrestricted fund policy. And we changed the title so it's consistent in what you'll see in the budget and in the title. And the changes that we made were we increased the minimum level from 16.7, which is two months, to 25%. We increased the annual target level from 25 to 50. So we'll always try and attain that at budget time, the 50%. And then we removed the maximum threshold that was in there. And those are, that's just a summary of the changes that we made. Again, this is reviewed at audit time to make sure we're meeting those requirements and during the budget time. And it also says that we will review this policy to make sure it's still in line with what the goals are on an annual basis as well.
Rick? Everybody good?
Good.
Aaron? Thumbs ups works. Thanks, Aaron. Okay.
So offering this.
We're still working on this mechanical stuff. Okay. Wes, tell me if this is not the place to ask or not. So what made me think about it was with Aaron here and stuff. The question I want to ask the council is, should we amend our whatever charter procedures to allow voting virtually? Now we can't.
I thought we had it for COVID. Did we not?
Okay. Just a sec, Wes. Before we go through that, I want to make sure procedurally that this is something to talk about in a special session and that the rest of the council would like to talk about it. So I don't, I, I mean, is this something you guys are interested in pursuing or talking about or not?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with making it possible for people to participate virtually.
I don't know if we need to go over it as far as, we're under an emergency order right now that allows Aaron to vote if he's on Zoom tonight with us.
Right.
And the only restriction of that is if all of a sudden we lost contact. The way the thing was drafted, it says we'll make every due diligence to try to get him back on. But if he's, can't be brought back on, it's too bad, it's too sad kind of deal.
So, so I guess my question is, do we want to do it now or wait until COVID is over and then we have to do it?
I think it doesn't have to be an emergency to do it. We declared an emergency to do it. But I think we can then pass an ordinance basically saying we're allowing for electronic voting in these circumstances.
So that's my question, Rick. Does the council want to pursue that to allow it when it's not an emergency setup?
That'd be fine, but I don't think it takes a meeting to do that as well. I think everybody would agree with that.
So we need to direct staff, though. Robert, sorry?
There are a few issues. The first thing we need to do is, is double check to make sure that there's not any kind of prohibition in the charter against it. Second, I, it's not clear under state law that, that this can be done. So I know that there are discussions about whether, whether a measure is going to be brought before the legislature to expressly allow this. I know there are differing opinions within different municipalities. And some are, some have made the decision to stretch this, this temporary authorization into permanent authorization. And I think others are less comfortable with it. So I think we're likely to see some express legislative authorization at the next session. So we'd be happy to look into this and monitor it for you and, and report back to you on, on the council's options if that would be helpful.
So maybe what I'm doing is jumping the gun and that we, which is where you were headed to, Rick. I understand. Thank you.
Come out of the COVID.
Yes.
Already in the hopper, this coming session saying it's worked well in local jurisdictions and they want to keep.
So let's see what the legislature does. So let's just hold off on it. Okay, thanks. Thank you, Robert.
That's good.
All right. Who's going to? Well, let's see. Do we want to take a break now? Okay, we're going to take a break now for 10 minutes. Properties, town, town-owned properties. Take it away, guys.
Mayor and council, pursuant to your direction, memory escapes me, a couple of weeks, a couple of meetings, a couple of months, I can't remember which. You asked staff to bring back a more detailed packet about what we own, when we got it, how we got it, maybe some information about the intent, those kinds of things. So Brian has worked hard to put this together. I'm going to let him kind of take it away and walk, and walk us through and just give us a context on what we've got and maybe what the context is. So Brian, thanks for all your hard work on this.
Yeah, no problem. Happy to, happy to share the, the experience and knowledge that, so, you know, some, some of us on staff have, you know, we're looking at all these properties tonight. It's been a kind of a slower acquisition. So I think, you know, we have a little more familiarity, whereas some people might be looking at a lot of these for the first time. So my approach, I think, is going to be, can you, you guys can see my screen where I have the kind of the, the packet on one side and Google Earth on the other? Is that legible?
Yeah. Yes, it's great, Brian.
Okay. We'll use.
And like we've always said on these things, you know, don't repeat what's on here, but tell us what's not on here.
Okay, well, so our goal here is to kind of just go through each property, talk about it a little bit and the pros and cons of, of each property and then kind of open it up to a larger discussion, I think, at the end about what the, the council's direction on the kind of a policy on these, on these properties is. So with that being said, the first property that we've identified is the fuel property. It is, you can see my stocks or lack thereof. Down here, just really, if there was a window behind you, you'd be able to look out across the street and see it. It's this property identified right here. There's some information about the, the costs associated with it. This one is interesting because it has both the cash price and then some other considerations that were given. So that, that kind of drives the, the price in a non-traditional way. And we did do, we had a outside consultant work through a concept of what that might look like. And that's the graphic you see at the bottom of the page. What you also probably are familiar with is that we are looking at the eastern, the western side of this site as one of the potential, the two finalists for the police station. So with that being said, I don't think there's a lot of, there's not a lot of factual information I have in addition to what's in the memo. But really philosophically, when, when this property became available to the town, the intent there was, with the acquisition, was to kind of take this and use it as an incentive to spur some development along the Harmony corridor. I don't think it was the town's intention to ever develop the site. I think it was to use the property to bring to a deal that would exemplify the kind of development that the town was striving for with the Harmony corridor standards. At the time that this was acquired, we were refining those standards. Now they're actually adopted into the code. So there's a little more concrete language there for us, for us and other developments along the Harmony corridor to follow. I think that's. Matt or Don, do you guys have anything to add to that?
I will, I'll add, Ryan. The, the layout you see there was generated as a kind of more like services on the front, like fronting Harmony Road with maybe some small restaurants or, you know, a dry cleaner or, or the like. And then the things that were in the back, the intent was there would be either office or some sort of maybe financial banking or something. So that was the layout that was presented. It was just kind of a concept to show what the carrying capacity of that site might be to give somebody an idea of what could happen there.
Yeah, I would actually also point out that some of those, some of the things depicted in that, you know, this was a very early concept sketch. I think we had it from, it's from January of 2016. So it's now going on four years old. If, if we were to talk about this site now, there's a couple of things that we would want to make sure that we understood that where this building in this quadrant is situated is kind of counter to how I would envision the development coming through. Because the other development down here in the, in the blue has a strong access point that comes right through that, what would be almost the center of that building. So probably some orientation that would change there. And then also you see that this access road that we're showing north, south is kind of centered in the site. And you can see on Google Earth where this, this line is, that's where it actually works as far as deceleration, acceleration in conjunction with the railroad tracks. So a couple of, just reinforcing that these graphics that we're showing to you are very conceptual in nature. And the longer we go looking at them, the more things we find that we need to be refined.
Okay, next one? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I have a question regarding on the Farrell property, the, I see this term other considerations.
Yes.
1.4 million. And then I see down below, in addition to the purchase price, the following considerations were granted to Hartford for the property. Where do we stand on those six items? We, are we whole now or is this being carried? And then how is it carried in the budget?
So number one is resolved. Number two is resolved as well. Number three, that's a credit.
Do you know what resolve means?
Yeah. It's already been paid out. It's already been paid out, basically, in kind, or whatever you call it.
Yeah, and actually, so number, okay.
Well, to be clear, I mean, Brian, just to be clear on number one, I mean, I'm going to hang on a second. With number two, number two actually was done, the majority of that was done when we did.
Harmony Road.
Harmony Road. But there was a little, little extra that we did, you know, to make that access.
Yeah, that was actually done with phase three of Harmony Road. So not the part that was adjacent to the property, but yeah, but we had Connell do it as part of that other scope. Yeah.
That's correct. Okay. But, but the money spent and the construction's done.
Correct. Number three, the waiver of the sanitary sewer reimbursement. So this has been, this is kind of a credit that they can use as they apply for building permits. However, all of the financials have been updated so that these are not part of the projected revenues that come in with those, those building permits. Is that?
Yeah. And, yeah. And then just to give a little more detail with that, this is for that Timneth, you know, the, we, we call it the South Lateral, which is a, a, some construction of sanitary sewer, which was done many years ago, paid for and, and done. So this was just part of the recovery process.
That's correct. Number four and five, the waiver of those annexation fees, those are complete, we, you know, those were part of the annexation agreements for both this property and the KM properties, both of which are through the annexation process. And then number six was a reimbursement due to the town. That's not the full reimbursement for the property, but that's just the prorata share for the, that 15 acres. So that's also been resolved. So the only one that we would be carrying is that, is the number three, the building permit reimburse or waiver at time of building permit, but that's built into the forecasts. So we're not forecasting to receive that money. We've, we've allocated that in the reimbursement.
Thank you.
Okay, KM Farm.
KM Farm. So there are two KM Farms and we'll talk about them a little bit together, a little bit separately, I think. The North KM Farm, this graphic's a little bit challenging. This piece over here on the, on the left is the Thornton piece. So that is actually not part of the KM parcel. The, Weld County uses the blue to designate the areas that are annexed to the town outside of Weld County. So they're not part of the county anymore. That's why that, that piece is blue. But this, this shape right here is the KM Farms North. We've talked about this a little bit in the, in the recent past and there is some opportunities there for, for some uses. And I would say that this, of all of them, of all the properties that we've, we'll probably discuss, this probably has the, the shortest timeline on it for any kind of redevelopment, I guess, is the, is the term. But those two properties were, were kind of, the north and the south were acquired roughly at the same time. A couple, actually, I think one was acquired like in January and one was acquired in December. So a little bit separated, but in the same year. And we are still, as in the CIP, showing the ongoing payments. It was financed over five years. So I think we've made three of the five payments on that property. Any specific questions on that? You know, we've talked about a little, we've talked about this one in detail a little bit more.
Thompson Property.
Thompson Property. Here's, the next one is the KM South. It's very similar situation to the KM North. The Thompson Property. So this is, this actually predates my involvement with the town and I think TST's general involvement with the town. This property was acquired from Les Thompson, thus the name Les, the Thompson Property. He still is a property owner in the town and has a residence just north of the Thompson Property. Also, I think the, one of the main parts of acquiring this property, if I understand the history correct, was it also came with a box elder share, which was technically purchased separately, but they were, as I understand it, one, one deal put together. And this one is, is very challenging. We did give a, not give, but sold some property for the, for the I-25 right of way expansion. And you can see that's this, this different distance right over here. But really this is, I think there's some outfall opportunities for under drains for regionally in this area. But because of its proximity to the railroad tracks and the geography of it, it's a high bank to the railroad coming down to this slough and then a horse pasture kind of property on the bottom. That's really, has a, some pretty strong open space characteristics. I wouldn't say that that has a lot of redevelopment or sale possibilities.
Yeah, Matt, the only other thing with this is we, we got one share of box elder ditch with this, which is probably one of its enduring qualities.
The other challenge, the other challenge with it is its access is off of County Road 40, right at the bend where the railroad tracks are. And that's about the only way to get to the property. So it's, it's very challenged from an access.
Yeah, you, you can see our, this is at the very, very bottom. This is our Pudar River Trail. This is the, the pond that is what, right behind Walmart. And then this.
Brad, can you move, can you move your, your Google Earth thing to that area too? Thanks.
Yes. Yep. So the orange on the Google Earth is going to be the town owned properties and then the green is, are our parks. This piece of property in between there is owned by City of Four Combs Natural Areas. So, and we, we had talked to them, and then the river runs through there as well, kind of in this big oxbow. We had talked to them about trying to partner up with some kind of development to get people out there. And they're really, they view that as a, more of a habitat kind of area and they don't, not interested in induce, introducing people into that area. Any other questions on Thompson?
Artisan.
Artisan District. So this one was acquired in December of 2017. Again, you can see the conceptual rendering from the concept book of January of 2016. So quite a bit before the property was actually closed on. This one, also we are evaluating really in this, in this space right here for the future police station. I don't, I think there's, there was, at one point, there was some strong intent on, on developing this in either, in, in some form or fashion, also looking for a partner to do that, not really the town spurring the development, but bringing the land as part of a, a larger comprehensive deal that would put those, put that, put some catalyst into Old Town there.
One of the, one of the other reasons was the, the developer that owned the property was planning on single family homes or some mixed use kind of apartments or others in a small four acre component. And it was, it seemed like it was, it's kind of the heart of, once the Parkway goes in and Fourth Avenue, that to have just more residential there in the downtown, Old Town area as an anchor, didn't, didn't really, at the time, wasn't, wasn't deemed the highest and best use potential for that.
4201 Main.
4201 Main. So this property has some strategic aspects to it. The, the first one and the primary one is that when we were building the Old Town improvements, specifically in this case, the improvements to Third Avenue, which is the street just to the south of 4201 Main, you can see that the right of way is, is quite constrained there. We were not able to squeeze in the, the appropriate cross section of road and a sidewalk on both sides. We opted to put the sidewalk on the south side because that's where there was the, the, the Old Timneth Hotel, which had a, a commercial aspect to it. And, and really we wanted to make sure that, you know, that connectivity going through there and then around the corner seemed to be a large, a larger requirement or a larger benefit than putting the walk on the north side and shifting the street closer to the south. Also, as you look at where the properties were, you know, this, this house is set further back. This one is, is kind of right up against it. So in the potential for redevelopment of this, then we would be able to expand that street section to get our sidewalk out there, possibly even some on-street parking on one of those sides. The other, the other piece of that is that we've had quite a few inquiries and this, this parcel to the north has been for sale for, I think it's been for sale for at least the last 10 years. And, and we've had a number of different people come in and look at the, the access or look at redevelopment opportunities there. The challenge with that property is the access. You can, if you extend this line straight down, that is the railroad right of way. So you can see that technically their only access to this, if this building were to remain, is, is this little 12 foot alley that runs between there. So there is some synergy between those two parcels as they were to develop, if they were to redevelop together or, or possibly this parcel might need to acquire some property from, from the 4201 Main parcel in order to get appropriate commercial access for that property.
And Brian, just to add on, there is an alley actually right of way to the, to the west of it, just that the neighboring property has kind of taken over by adding sheds and things like that to that property. So it's, that that is actual right of way that could provide access to that property. So two points of access could be achieved, but it's very constrained to be able to redevelop that vacant parcel or that storage parcel to the north.
A quick question on this one. And correct me if I'm wrong, but my, my understanding is as we get the Parkway done and get some of those projects completed, we'll be closing off some of the vehicle access on Main Street. Is that, is that accurate? And if that's accurate, where, where would that?
So our, our goal is to keep Main Street open as, I mean, our first position for the railroad negotiation with the Parkway is that the Main Street would remain open at that location. If, if the the Main Street crossing requires closure, it would be pretty much right there at that, at the very north edge of that property.
Okay, so right at the railroad, isn't it?
Yeah, right at that corner.
Okay.
Yeah, and I might, I might dive in now, Matt. And if that, if that comes to be, which honestly is, is at, well, let's just say either worst or best option is 50/50. Okay. So that, the, the best thing that I can think here is that we have a 50/50 chance of keeping that open. If I was to be very realistic, I would think it'd be less than that, but we'll say 50/50 right now. If it is closed, we're going to have to find a way to create some type of, you know, emergency vehicle turnaround at that point, which obviously you can see is going to be problematic if we don't have some level of other property that we can use to, to make that happen.
I have a question as well. Is it, we are currently renting this property out or leasing it out? Is that correct?
That's correct. That property is currently leased. I believe the term runs through May of 2021.
Thank you.
Do you know what they, what we bring in annually on that, Brian?
I do not know the specific terms of that lease.
Do, do you think that it's enough to cover our carrying costs on it?
Oh yeah, I think, I want to say that our, I think we're around the $1,400. I can't, I'm hesitant to quote that. Maybe that, maybe Lisa or Christine would have those general revenues for the three properties that we're, we're leasing currently. But yeah, I mean, with, so the, the properties that we are leasing waypoints operating those for us and they're taking a percentage of the lease for the operating costs and then the expenses that.
Brian, lease is up and I think she'll have actual stuff for us or not.
That's what I was just going to say. We don't, but we can definitely bring that back.
Okay, let's wait till we got actual numbers on the answer that question, okay?
Certainly. Anything else on 4201?
4104?
4104 is the old fire station in Old Town. This one, we'll talk a little bit about this property and then the next property together, which is 5125 Fourth Avenue. That's that, this yellow property together. You can see that there's a, quite a, a large property boundary that's being shared there. Currently, we're using 4104 Main, the fire station for storage. It is actual an integral part of the Public Works operations right now. Maybe Don wants to, to speak to that.
Yeah, I'm happy to speak to that. We, we store, we actually store the street sweeper in there. It's a, it fits and it works great and, and we, we absolutely need that storage at the moment.
I think we do.
Need it. Yeah, we will need it for the foreseeable future.
And we're current, I think we, there were some off-season, I think we saw the mower in there during the off. I think that most of those requirements will, with the, the 2021 expansion of, of the existing 4800 Goodman Building and then the, the relocation of the police to the, the new police station, which we're hopeful is early 2022 at this point. Would, those, those two events combined would free up quite a bit of space at 4800. I think that we would be able to, to kind of take the, the brunt of that storage out if to the onsite there. Is that right, Don?
Yeah, it is. I mean, we still could logistically use that storage as a, a location in Old Town for kind of just things that make it easier to, to maintain some of the, the landscaping and other things that are downtown. But, but it wouldn't be as critical once those two things that you stated happen.
The other main use that we use here is this is kind of the headquarters for the Taste in Timneth and for the Tree Lighting Festival. So the events are staged out of this location. I don't think that's a, I don't think that's a huge concern, but it is a, a way that we're, well, we have utilized it in the past. And if we were having events there this year, we would be utilizing it, but obviously we're not.
3927.
The one, one last thing about that building, the fire station, is that it is in, some of the interior structural walls are in kind of rough shape. They've come up in our SIRS audit for the last two years and we're, we're working on getting those evaluated. I don't think it's necessarily unsafe, but I don't think it would survive any kind of renovation work.
Correct.
Okay, 40, 5125 Main. So this is, again, that adjoining property. This is leased through the, through March of 2021. And the lesser of this is the, the Timothy Presbyterian pastor. So I think he, he enjoys being able to walk across the street to work. This is also a modular home, maybe actually, hopefully I'm using the right terminology there, Matt. But I believe we can, it, it's on a, I believe it's on a foundation, but it's still able to be moved. And I think there was some discussion of bifurcating that from the property, if there was a, a want to redevelop some of that area, that there'd be an asset in the building and then there'd be a separate asset in the property. Is that, is that on a foundation, the 5125?
It is, Brian. Yep.
3927.
3927 Main Street. This property, I think, has the, has the least strategic value of all of the, the properties. I think, you know, the, the proximity to Timneth Elementary is, was the, the most intriguing piece of this is, we had talked with the school district when new elementary schools came online and they were to probably look at, at taking Timothy Elementary out of service, that that might become a, a town facility in some sort of capacity, whether it be a library or senior center or rec center or you know, some, some type of facility there. This would be adjoining to that, I think, was the, the main, the main thought behind that one. That one's also currently leased through February of 2021.
I do have the lease rates for, for everybody's information for each of those. This last one, 3927 is 1,800 a month. 42, or 5125 is 1,100 a month. And 4201 Main is 1,800 a month. I don't have the percentage of waypoint, but that's the, that's the lease rate.
Rubyall?
The Rubyall property. So this was an interesting property. They actually approached the town for it. We met Mr. Rubyall in a, in one of our open houses. I think, it was about, I think it might have been about the transportation master plan if I'm remembering correctly. But he was interested in, you know, he, they had owned this property for quite a while. There had been another, I think he had been leasing it to maybe the power company, I think maybe Excel, but then they didn't need it anymore. So he kind of was, it just, he just kind of a vacant property for him. He offered it to the town at a less, less than the appraised value. And we saw a strategic asset there where we could connect that to the artisan district as that was coming online. Also, we've used that for the extension of the alley that runs between the beerworks and the residential at 5151 Third Avenue in order to, to kind of make that a one-way alley coming through and then, and turning around. I don't think this, but it's right up against the railroad property and it's a very, rather small parcel of land. This really, in, in all intents and purposes, we should just be considering this part of the artisan district parcel. However, it was a separate transaction and separate, separate parcel that we're, as we're identifying it. I think we, I think we might store Christmas lights in the small shed that's existing on the property.
And Brian, do we use that now currently to get back to the parking lot or is that, am I thinking incorrectly?
We do. That, yes. So the, the, the route to the, so you can see the parking lot's kind of roughed in here. I think this is probably mid-construction. The access comes down through the, through here and into the parking lot and then the parking lot would exit out to Third Avenue.
Shows a little better, it shows a little better on the Google Earth image there, Brian.
Sorry, yep, there we go.
Great, thank you.
4850 Signal Tree Drive. This is the original police station site. This site, I think, was initially purchased for $310,000. It's 1.53 acres. There are some other encumbrances on that. The PIA, PIA contribution for that is $190,000. There's the contribution for the Stonefly Roundabout and landscaping per the initial. There's not an agreement in place for that, but per the initial estimates was around 263,000. And then that, there's the, we're currently in the middle of the buyback option for this from the original developer that would run through November 1st of 2020.
Has he indicated that he might exercise that?
Not to me. I don't know if anybody else has any other information on that.
I, I don't know. I don't think there's been any recent communication other than in the past, we've talked about what that contribution relative to the South Roundabout might be if he were to exercise.
All right, then the, the last page of this is just kind of detailing the other properties that are not, that are either parks or, or buildings that we're currently running town operations out of. So there's the community park, the 4850 Weitzel Park, Wildwing Park, Timothé Ranch Park and the Riverbend Park. I'm happy to talk about those. If anybody has any questions about them, but I don't, they didn't really seem to be as germane to the discussion this evening. And then the two town buildings, the 4800 Goodman and 4750 Signal Tree Drive.
Can you show me the Riverbend one real quick? On the map? So I can have a good picture of that.
Yep, so this is Harmony and Five. So it's really that frontage all along Five down to about here. These are approximations of the property lines in my, drawn in my Google Earth there.
Okay, yeah, that's good enough.
Yeah, so it's a nice piece of, it's a nice piece of river frontage there.
Is there any way we can get a copy of these pictures at some point for our book here?
We can, we can create sheets for each of these where, where you just have the title of the property and then add the graphic with it. We didn't, we didn't really, with the intent of the conversation today was for the other things, but we're happy to create, so you have a complete. Right off the, the trail there probably, right?
Yeah.
Yep, it's a nice piece of river there. So that, that's kind of the informational piece of this agenda item. I think that there's probably some discussion. I'm gonna take down my share unless anybody wants me to leave it up there. It's just gonna help me.
So here's what I'd like to bring up to the council is it seems like we have a random set of vacant property all over Timneth that I'm not sure there's at this day a exact plan for. And I think one of my concerns is we've got a bunch of property that we are holding for development, i.e. office buildings, retail buildings, at least according to what we just reported. And I don't understand the purpose of that when we've got a big chunk of ground owned in Harmony that's all going to be commercial, a big chunk of ground that we just actually set up as commercial that's right next to Timneth Ranch. We've got a big chunk of ground that's there at County Road 5 and Harmony, the Harrison property. And potentially some other people that will acquire property or have property that may be developing it to commercial. I don't know why the town should be a land speculator as opposed to owning property for the benefit of the town. And if, if we need it, if we want to put something on it, obviously like a police station, we ought to own it. But in my opinion, we shouldn't be land speculators, which this appears to me to be a lot of the properties. And so what I'd like to float to the council is, is should we hire a significant company, a real estate company that's in the development stage that come back to us and say, you know, we, we've seen your town, we've seen your dream works, we've seen all these things. And as a town, here's what we think are properties that probably don't meet your goals anymore. And so I'm going to just throw that out.
I think that as a council, we should maybe first look at what our goals are. Because I do think some of them purchased follow, let's say, the dream book. And my question would be, are we all in support of this or is maybe us look at the bigger picture first and look at what do we want to accomplish or what are, what is our vision for that area? Because I know most of these were, were purchased prior to my involvement on the council. But I do know that the document for the dream book is from 2014. And it looks like the majority of these properties were purchased after that with the intention of someday fulfilling the vision of the dream book. And I think if it's not our vision to, to follow through with the dream book, that maybe we look at that and then make our decisions based on what we think our vision should be.
That's a good.
Spinning off that, I, I like that comment and I think, I think what probably makes sense, Wes, I'd like your input in here real quick, is maybe we have, again, a, a special session that we sit down and say, what's our, what's our vision as far as properties are? And, and, you know, in 2014, the world, this town has changed five times what it was in 2014. So the DreamWorks can't envision where we're headed today. And my thought is that we ought to step back, see what our vision is. I'd almost like somebody totally unaffiliated with us and the town to maybe at that meeting come in and give us thoughts about, hey, here's, here's what other towns have done. Here's what, you know, we see what you have and, and this is a great idea or this isn't as good an idea and, and help us banner our goals. And so I, I agree with you, Lisa, and, and I mean, Wes, I'm gonna flip it to you.
Thanks. So I don't disagree. I think, you know, as the town evolves and, and, and for right, wrong or indifferent or for whatever that is, i- it's always good to step back and take an inventory of your assets, take a look at those, see how those fit with your desired, whether it's your comp plan or whether it's your other parks and trails plan or your transportation master plan. Just the other plans that you've got buttoned up, in this case, the artisan plan. And so to that extent, I don't disagree. I think the first part is it would be helped to get, to make sure that, that everybody's expectations and goals are as closely aligned as we can. And then I think out of that, it's a more natural conversation to say, well, what fits, what doesn't? You can rank them like this has got a 40% fitter. We're never going to use this or this is a high probability if, if in fact we pursue X or Y. So I do like the idea if, if the council's so inclined, we can certainly set up a work session or, or at time just to kind of huddle and talk about what the goals are. I do think there's probably some merit in having some maybe outside eyes partner with us and looking at whether they bring them in very, at the front end or at the middle or, or at the back. With your permission, if I could sleepy on that, maybe huddle up a little bit. I don't mind coming back in the next meeting or two and just maybe laying out, hey, this is what, this is where we would like to go. Like this is the next step and maybe the step after, something like that. So.
Yeah, Rick.
Yeah, the, let's use one of these examples. The old fire station. I know how important it is to Dawn and to some of the others who need it for storage, but that's not the highest and best use for that building at all. We don't know if it's going to fall down on itself. If we just hold it sooner or later, we're going to have a big expense. Maybe, just maybe with the way things are going across the street there with fine and funky down in the beerworks, maybe that'd be a, a nice bakery or donut shop if we put it on the market and let people look at it kind of thing. What, what, what do you do on storage then? You're not attracting other business into that area having a storage shed for the town. Maybe you look at putting a metal prefab building somewhere on another property that you have for your storage and take that facility. So I think all of these deserve a question or a to question their, their need. The house up the street there by where the boat's at. I was told at the time we purchased that by a council member, that is going to be torn down and that's going to be a parking lot for the dream vision. Well, it might be going to, but that assumes that you're going to be able to move forward on the dream vision. And I've had concerns for two years on that property and that vision. There's a lot of sites in this area, including privately owned sites. So it would make a great dream vision site, but we don't have any takers at this point, but we can just sit there and hold the property. We're paying, I think, 500 a month management fee on each of those properties, those three, the one the pastor lives in, the one up by the school and the one by the boat, I'll call it. Then you pay for the landscaping. We had to pay 30-some thousand, it says here, for landscaping with the one by the boat. They'll just drain you, whereas we could have people living in there and make the town look like it's starting to come where we want it. So I would be in favor of sitting down and giving a good look. As far as we should have numbers, so if our friend that had given us the original police site comes in and wants to exercise it, we'll know exactly what we're talking about there. And if he doesn't, then we start looking, what are the options for that one? Maybe the fire department wants to expand their facility. Who knows?
So let, let me spin off both Wes and Lisa on, on your thoughts and, and see if this makes sense is to have staff, Wes, come back to us and say, hey, here's, here's an expert at it. I mean, no, nobody here is an expert on developing. You know, the engineering staff isn't, this, nobody up here is to develop. In fact, I'm pro, I, I have developed, so I, I will take that, but I would not call myself an expert. That we get somebody that's an expert on the development of property and especially municipal properties and come in and help us think through the very comments that Rick's making and, and that with each one of our properties. And that, so first off is to have you find, assign you to, to maybe come back to us with somebody or firm that you say, hey, here's, here's somebody we can use as a consultant. That we all then have a special session with that consultant where we bounce off ideas and thoughts and say, what is the, the wheat and what is the shaft? And, and go forward. And, and my thought is, is that we don't have that special meeting till maybe February, because we've got, I think, a lot going on between now and, and the end of the year. And then I know in January, we're planning on doing council procedures and that. And so maybe the first meeting in February or a second meeting in February, we do this. So I, I made comments and I'm looking to you guys to add, delete or make comments to that.
Yes, Aaron. Comment here. So I don't see these town-owned, I, I see these town-owned properties probably differently than, than perhaps I'm hearing from you, Rick and Mark. I do not see these at all as a, as a, a negative for our town. We were able to purchase, just doing a little quick math here. We're able to purchase the fuel property for a little over $4 square foot, for 33 a square foot. And, you know, that's right on Harmony. So it's not like it's a losing proposition here. The homes that are, that are bought in there, they're being rented out. I believe that the management company is taking 10%, which would be normal for a management company. And, and they're also appreciating at the same time. It's not a depreciating asset. We look at the land up, the, the farms up north. We bought those for $8,200 acre and $6,500 an acre. And they're on Harmony or on Mulberry, which obviously someday, as it continues to, to go out there, are going to be worth even more. So the, these town-owned properties that we have are appreciating much more than if we had it sitting in a bank somewhere, making, you know, point two interest or whatever we're making on it. Certainly less than 1% interest. So I, I do not see these as a negative or as being fiscally irresponsible with our money in owning these. But that being said, I do agree that we could have a consultant and a neutral consultant that's not connected to anybody or any agenda that can come in and talk to us about what, what they see as being valuable, not valuable, what could go with our vision and what couldn't. So I, I'm in agreement to have a, a neutral consultant come in and talk to us about it. But I definitely don't view these as a negative, a negative for our town.
Aaron, and just to be clear, I, I hope I didn't express that it's a negative. I, in fact, I had no intention to say that it was a negative. What my intention is, is are they a strategic asset that we should own today and going forward? That was, that's really where I'm going, Aaron. I, I agree with you. We'll probably make money on every single one of those if we sell them all out. I, I have no, no doubt on that. One of the things, by the way, if we do sell them, we, we could pay off in 2025, we'll be able to pay off some of the loans early. So that's really 4.8% at least one of our loans is that we can basically make on our money. But I want to, I want to be really clear. I, I have no negativity or judgment on any of these. on any of these properties, and I don't think Rick necessarily does either. I think it's, alright, so these properties were bought in '16 and '17. Some have carried over, they don't even have a date when the town acquired them. And so is that still a strategic asset for this town? And that's, that's the only thing I'm bringing up, and I think you and I are both in agreement that let's get somebody out, third party that's, that can look at this and say, not, and, and we, and I think we as a council need to discuss, should the town be an investor and a developer, or should the town be an acquirer of strategic assets? And, and that's a discussion that I think merits all of us to discuss and, and see what we think.
Sounds good.
Okay.
I'll just, Brett? I'll just add my thoughts that, yeah, I would like to have us, have a plan in place for some of these proper, for all these properties. Even, you know, if, if it is a case where we have to hold it for a little while, you know, we've, we've laid out what, what factors kick in that we are actually gonna do something with it. Because, I mean, yeah, I see half this list, I think we have seven properties in Old Town, and it's, it's very nebulous, what, what we're gonna do with it and when we would do it. And so, yeah, just, I, I agree with the general sentiments that have been expressed. I'd like us to lay out some, some roadmaps for how we're gonna use all these properties.
I, I think the key to this whole process that we're all suggesting is that we step back, and it's not a, it's not a dictate on what was done in the past, or what was happening. I think each one of these were done with strategic plan at the time. The question is, now, is it strategic to continue to hold them going forward? And, and that's my question. And, and I think everybody, from watching the nods of everybody here, and I think Aaron has agreed in his comments, that that's what we really need to take a look at. So I think we all agree, so I'm gonna look at everybody. I think we all agree that we'd like you, Wes, to find a good third-party consultant for us on this, to sort of bounce ideas off of. And then we'll have a work session in February to discuss just town properties and where we go. And let's keep this packet together, because it was what, real well-prepared. Thank you, Brian, and Dawn, and, and Matt. It, it was very, very helpful and informative to all of us up here, I think. And so let's go forward, if that sounds good for everybody. And I think everyone's nodding. Great. Planning overview. Matt, I'm putting you on a short string here.
Oh geez, I could take as much time as you guys want.
I know you could. That was my concern.
You can see I'm smiling.
Yeah, I can tell. You know, those crocodile smiles and tears I get. So here, I, I wanna start with this, because you handed out incredibly insightful piece of paper that I still have in this booklet, called the Timnas Land Use Code Administration. And at the time, I, you gave it to us, I looked to Aaron and said, and I said, I don't understand this, could you help me with that? Looked to Aaron, and Aaron, if I'm putting words in your mouth, cut me off. But Aaron said, hey, I understand that sheet, it makes tons of sense to me. And then I think I looked to you, Lisa, and you said, yeah, I understand it, we were involved. Rick, at the time, wasn't sure, but I think now he does. And Brett, I looked at you, and you said, I think it makes sense. So I don't want to regurgitate if everybody here understands it, but let's open it up again. Is this something you want Matt to discuss, or do you guys all understand it? I'm stepping back to, you know, I know, Aaron, you said, hey, I, I helped develop some of that. So I, I know you feel good about it. Is this something we wanna spend time with, Lisa? I'll just look straight at it.
I guess I'm not sure what Matt was gonna be talking about, so I guess I can't.
Well, so there, there are two prongs.
Yeah, go ahead, Matt.
And one was, one was that sheet I handed out, just kind of at the last meeting, I just put it on your chairs, and no explanation, no background.
Yeah.
And so it was, I didn't give any context to it, and I apologize for that to the council, so.
Well, but, but at the time, in fairness to you, Aaron immediately said, hey, I understand it totally. And I was, as it turned out, the only one that said, I don't understand, and I need some help. And you were kind enough to sort of sit down and explain it to me, and I appreciated that.
Yeah, and it was, it was kind of, it's kind of your cheat sheet out, and I'll just maybe take two minutes, very, very short. It's kind of a cheat sheet for, for you guys to see what processes are happening potentially in front of you, and what, where it is in the process, and what the decision-making body is. So it's, it's at a glance, almost like, oh, we're talking about a, let's say, a rezoning, for example. You can look down at the sheet, see where the rezoning is, and see how the approvals work. So it's, it's just a little cheat sheet that you can have at the, at the desk, and when things come up, have an opportunity to talk about them. So that was, that was the whole intent for that. But the, but that spurred this conversation for tonight, was kind of a summary of a planning overview. And I just, literally, this is not real orchestrated. I put you, put together an outline, and it really just touches on each of the applications, what they do, and how, how they get approved. It's just for background, it's probably, you know, repeating information to most of you, or maybe it's new or not, but I just wanted to get everybody maybe on the same page as understanding of what the different applications are. Some of you may have a little more understanding of it than others, and just wanted to give you an opportunity to ask questions and, and kind of roll this out a little bit so that things aren't coming to you in a, looking a little odd or surprised for an application. So I can take, I can do this very quick, because I think.
So go ahead, do it real quick.
You know a lot about this already.
Take her away.
Alright. So annexation zoning, annexation, we've had one just recently. It's, it's bringing a piece of property that's in the county into the town. It is a, it's by ordinance, it requires a planning commission and council action and public hearings. So the county, the county has to kind of release it, and the town accepts it. So it works kind of as a two-parter type of thing. And there's a petition that is submitted that actually asks the town to take this property, is it an appropriate property as for, with the regard to the comp plan, with regard to the visions and goals of the town. Comprehensive Plan Amendment is a, an application where if the plan has a land use, a piece of property has a land use on it, that doesn't line up with what the, the owner or the developer wants, they can come in and ask for an amendment from the, from the town to change that land use designation. That would, that is a planning commission and town council action to get there. Planning commission makes a recommendation, the council actually acts on it. But it has to align with our comprehensive plan goals and objectives. I mean, the comprehensive plan is a living document, it is, it's a, it's something that can evolve and change as, as the town grows and, and changes. So we look to it to have, give us some direction, but it's not like the end-all, be-all, all the time. So at the time it was put in place, it set the framework. And then as it changes, people can, the councils change, and staff change, and those things can evolve and, and change as well. So, so that, that actually also includes a neighborhood meeting requirement. So you'll have that with a, and I'll kind of flag the neighborhood meetings as we go. A rezoning is literally changing a zoning, which you've seen recently, from one zoning designation to another. And, and that again, has a planning commission and town council action requirement. So, and neighborhood meeting as well. That has to, again, align with the, the comprehensive plan, and it has to align with the town's goals and visions for that property. There's a little more, a little bit of subjectivity when it comes to rezonings, because the property owners ask, asking for a change in what they're currently entitled to. So the council and planning commission have the wherewithal to say, well, we don't think it aligns with the comp plan, for example, in the goal of the community. So there's a little more discretion on the planning commission and council's part for that. With rezonings, I didn't put it on here, but there is another, it's called a PD overlay, a plan development overlay, which is a sort, a pseudo-zoning, and it's an add-on to an underlying zoning. So if somebody's bringing forward a creative project, for example, that doesn't quite fit one of our zoning categories, they can write a zoning code that overlays on top of it, and can modify the underlying zoning to, for the purpose of creating an interesting, higher and better use development. Such, the Trailside Project is an example of that, where there's a lot of mixed uses, different types of things, alley-loaded product, single-family product, mixed, or multifamily products, all in one kind of zoning area, but it has a PD overlay on top of it to give that flexibility to do all those different things. And they wrote literal code that said, this is the setback for this type of unit, this is the setback, this is the open space, and they, they basically laid out a zoning designation. All of those zoning actions require planning commission council approval. And zonings are by ordinance, so it's actually a much more legal, they're all legally binding, but this is one where it has to two reading, because it becomes law, so to speak, for this property. So it becomes that property's entitled use. And then we get into subdivision projects, and there's, there's two different types. There's a major subdivision, minor subdivision. Major subdivisions go through a series of steps, sketch plan, preliminary plat, final plat. Minor subdivision is a one-step final plat process. Major subdivision is a project that has more than six lots. So if it's a minor subdivision where there's just a handful of lots, you can do it as a one-action final plat, but it goes to planning commission and council. Sketch plan and preliminary plats are neighborhood meetings as well, they require those. Admin plats are just that, there's, it's something that's a, you can adjust up to 10 lot lines, but you're not actually increasing lots, you're not dedicating any right-of-way, there's no easement changes. It's literally a lot line adjustment, and that can be done at the staff level. So we can, we can accept that in, we can get a plat that is, changes it, we can get it recorded, but we do it at the staff, staff level, so you're not making big changes that the council would need to get involved with. Site plans have taken a little bit of a turn lately. We have site plans that have generally been one building, one small lot, such as like Chick-fil-A, Starbucks, those are pretty simple site plans. We, those, planning commission is the approving body for those. And there's no neighborhood meeting associated with it. When it comes to more buildings or multifamily projects, we have changed the code to be a town, planning commission recommendation and a town council action. And then we're also talking about, you know, having neighborhood meetings for those types of things. So that'll be a code change that we'll be bringing forward. But site plans are really, the, the twist to them is, they're basically a, as if you're building a single-family home on a lot, they submit a plot plan to the staff, and we review the plot plan. A site plan is just a glorified plot plan. But we need, we need bigger oversight by taking it to planning commission. Then conditional uses, those are, those are uses that don't fall neatly into a zoning designation. They, the, the use is not necessarily 100% desirable or convenient in that zoning. So we create a conditional zoning kind of use permit that says, well, for this use to be on this property, these conditions must apply. And then they have to submit to planning commission and town council for approval of those conditions. And that's where the council and the planning commission have the wherewithal to say, hey, we wanna say, we wanna add more buffering, we wanna add more screening, we want you to turn the lights down at this time, we want no noise. Beerworks is an example of that. It's a, the use is a conditional use in that zoning district where there was time-of-day constraints and noise constraints and things like that, that got applied on top of their, their, their business use. Interrupt me, too, if you have any questions, I'm trying to just rattle it off. So a new, a new designation is this Harmony Corridor. And this one, I'll spend a couple more minutes on, but Harmony Corridor is basically, it's basically from the Poota River all the way to, to Latham Parkway, and a thousand feet north and a thousand feet south, and it applies to all commercial or mixed-use zonings within that corridor. And, and if you're taking a bunch of notes, Lisa, I have, it's, most of this stuff is in the.
I'm not taking a bunch, just little ones.
Well, yeah, well, I can, but.
I think she's just doodling.
Yeah, yeah. So the, but it's all, a lot of it's spelled out in the land use code, and I can go over some of that with you, too, another time, so. But the, the Harmony Corridor, the purpose of that was to, to heighten the look and the feel of what's happening on Harmony, on Harmony Road. It gives a little more design standards, some more, trying to elevate the look and feel so that it doesn't turn into, I hate to say it, but like 392 in Windsor, where it was, you know, just a lot of setback buildings, parking lots. It, it turned in, you know, there's a stretch of that, that's just kind of strip mall-looking kind of stuff. And we're just, that was not the look and feel. We have one chance to do this. And this Harmony Corridor standard was the opportunity to start to overlay some kind of additional design parameters. With that, we, we have a design review committee component. And that design review committee is made up of three to five individuals, staff, one of the, one of the, so if we have an application in Harmony Corridor, we would, we would tap one of you as a council to be involved in that review committee, as well as, we have a couple professional architects that we had engaged when we wrote the Harmony Corridor standards, that we would pull them in on an hourly basis, so that they could round out our, our review committee. So we have some staff, council, and some third-party folks, and they could review these, give comments to the applicant, give guidance that, so that it matches up with what the intent of the Harmony Corridor is. So there's also another layer, is this development structure plan, which basically is kind of a proposal for the parcel that says, here's how this thing is gonna master plan out. And then as it develops, there can be tracks that can be taken down and developed separately. So we wanna have kind of a, a big look at it, make sure that that aligns with the town's goals. And then when they go into individual parcels, those need to fit into that development structure plan. Town waiver, council waivers, we, you actually have had an example of that recently, so don't need to go into much of that. But these are things that are slight modifications to the code, where it's for a better, higher purpose and use. So it's not, it's not just to waive something in it because we don't like this. It's like, hey, how are you making this better? This waiver will help you make it better, such as like the learning experience, for example, where we took the access from one side to the other side. We waived a criteria, you guys waived a criteria, so that it was allowing for the traffic to be moved from one local street over to the more collector street. I didn't put on here variances, we haven't had, and I, Mark and I had a conversation about this a little bit. We haven't had any variances in the last several years, primarily because of our new community. A lot of times, variances come about in older communities where there's hardships on a parcel that you just can't get around, you keep, like a setback, or generally it's setbacks, or if you wanna build something that may just not fit in your, on your parcel. So you can vary something, but it's not a hardship that you created, and it's not a financial hardship. Like, you can't just try to, you're not trying to get out of paying a little additional money to fix the problem. It's, so a lot of people don't meet those, because we got brand-new lots and developments. You know, if somebody's gonna come in, these things have all been plotted, they've all been designed to supposedly meet the criteria. So we haven't had many, and we steer people quite a bit away from it, because it's a hard standard to meet. We probably could have some come up, and that's where, where the council comes in, is you, your function, you act as the board of adjustments. So if a variance comes in, it goes to what's called the board of adjustments, and that's where the council actually. And that's where the council actually acts in that role. There is a public hearing associated with it. So if a, if a citizen wanted to bring something forward as a variance, the public, the neighbors are basically invited to the meeting to say, hey, we don't like this for these reasons or we're in support of it. And then the board of adjustments is who, you know, kind of weighs in on that whole thing. So, and it's, it's typical in older communities or more developed communities. With that, I'll breathe. That, the Harmony Corridor. Does that, does that give you a reasonable overview of all that?
Thanks, Matt. We understood every minute of that.
I'm sure you did. Well, Lisa, she's copious notes, so you can all cheat off of her.
We were, we were sitting on bated breath that whole time.
I think Rick has more than I do, actually. Maybe he was more discreet about his.
Nice.
See, see, look at his and then look at mine.
Fantastic.
See, I had to go to a tutorial before.
Well, I actually, I'm happy to actually add a little more content to this and then recirculate it out. So you don't have to look at your.
No, and I know later on this evening, I think there's part of the agenda, you're talking for some guidance as well.
Oh, do we have something?
Regarding.
This whole thing, guidance as far as.
Yep. Brad will have something that he brings up and we'll be talking about.
Oh, Brad. Okay.
And then the other part that's on here is maybe just my own pet peeve. I think there should be adequate notification on any agenda. If it's quasi judicial versus quasi legislative kind of deal. So that serves two purposes. One, it reminds me that we're not at the legislature anymore, Rick. You're in front of a council and you can't talk to both parties, either the citizens in that area or the developer in that area while this is on the agenda. And secondly, it also lets those two parties know there's a reason why the creeps not calling me back are not answering these emails that we're flooding in. So.
I think that's something we can denote and figure out.
Great.
That's a great one.
So we're at a point where we could go about 12 different directions. So do we, do we want to take a break? Let me give you three alternatives and you guys decide what you want. We could. Kim, did we totally cover everything for you? Okay. Hey, the only thing that I'd like to throw out to you and I think the council's all going to agree. Could you make sure that, that we pretty much highlight in our webpage, the CYO holiday festival thing as soon as possible? So that people see that we're doing it, that they understand the tree lighting, that this is going to take the place. And tout it up. Everything I've seen is, is going to be pretty special. All right. So you're done. We got, we got town owned properties discussed. So we've got, and I'm going to ask this, Robert, can, do we have to wait till we schedule the meeting to go to exec or to go to executive session? Okay. So that one won't work. So. So we can either take a break now or we could go to the police building site discussion and then take a break.
I'm going to take a break.
Here respective. So the question is, do we take a, we can take a five, 10 minute break. Do we want to take a five, 10 minute break or do we want to take a 30 minute break? We're sort of in a funny spot.
And there are some, I think Panera, I think there's a meal out here for you.
Okay. So 30 minute, just wait, or do we want to talk about something?
If we got something we can discuss, I'm okay with taking a short break.
I'm okay with that too.
Me too. We're talking about doing the police site either now or sometime after six, right?
That's right.
Yeah. Well, I mean, that's, let's take a brief break and then.
Okay. So let's take a 10 minute break, Aaron. And, and, and so I've got it at 20 till six. We'll come back and discuss. We'll take a break then at five till six, just so we can get ready for the meeting and then go. Okay? Sounds great. Wes, so site discussion, I think is what this is. Who, didn't have a name of somebody. Oh, it's Brian. Okay. Take her away, Brian.
Thank you. So in our last meeting, we kind of talked about the two, top two sites on our list. The fuel site and the artisan district site. And at that point, that was three weeks ago. So we had an extra, extra week in there. At that point, we were, it was council's direction to kind of do a little more fact finding and due diligence on those two pieces of property. Hoping that one of these reports, either the geotech report or the phase one analysis of one of these properties would, would kind of establish a clear frontrunner. I am unfortunately need to report that neither one of those is the case. Both properties came back pretty, pretty equal on, on all accounts. No challenges found in the phase one for either site. And then the, the geotech reports came back with very comparable soils, conditions and groundwater elevations. The groundwater elevations were kind of in the between eight and 11 feet, depending on different areas of different sites. But all would require de-watering for any kind of basement permanent or temporary de-watering for construction, permanent de-watering for, for operations there with the basement. And we, we kicked around kind of these, these challenges to see if there was, if any, if there was any one clear cut winner. The, the structural design team did take a look at the soils reports. They determined that it would not be recommend, they would not recommend doing any type of partial basement on either one of these sites. The concern they have there is just differential settling as you have one bottom slab, basically in a, in the saturated soils condition. And then one, you know, non-basement set slab at the, you know, basic ground elevation, which would be dry. So they weren't really, they had some strong hesitations to putting those, mixing those in the same building. Just because those two platforms would have a tendency to, instead of moving together, they would move differentially and then cause potentially some, some challenges with the foundation and the floor slab. All, all in all, the sites are very, very comparable in all the due diligence that we've performed to date. I do come back to the fuel site being just a tad bit more expensive in the known quantities that we have now based on the fill. But there's offset, there's some offsetting considerations with the artisan district. That is, it's, it's really a relatively unknown. People have been building and developing around that fuel property. As you can see in our, from our previous destruction, discussion on town owned properties, all of the infrastructure around that is already built. If there were any, I'll, I'll use the phrase, but I'm not, not crazy about any dead bodies to be unearthed there as we were in construction or, or design, those would have been found and identified at this point. However, the artisan district, that's pretty much an open field development where we're going to be building in areas where there's not a lot of development that has happened. So I think there's a little bit higher risk at that point. So unfortunately I don't even from our design team have a clear recommendation to you guys. There's some additional due diligence or discussion, I think, that our design team can have kind of vetting some of these things out. I'd also like to probably throw in that we'd like to get our two council liaisons together to have a kind of more detailed discussion about these two sites to bring a recommendation back. Unless there is a clear direction from the council tonight.
I think my two bits is we stay the course that we have. And that is that we've got a committee that comes back with a recommendation and that committee is comprised of Barrett and Rick and whoever else was on it. And I would suggest that there's, since that committee is more intimately involved in this than the rest of us. And unless I see anybody say that they strongly disagree. And, and we can still not choose the recommendation of the committee, but I, I would like to see the committee get together and come back with a recommendation.
I, I agree. I think that's, we're really kind of, we were hoping that there'd be a clear cut winner out of these, this additional reporting, but there really isn't. So.
Well, you know, the thing to me that I'm really pleased about is we've done due diligence. We've checked it all out. We've, we've come with a lot of different opinions and stuff. I'm going to look over at Terry. Terry, I assume you like the process of what's going on, but if you don't, please say. So, and you are on that committee, right, Terry? Great. And so if it's real close, I guess my suggestion to the committee would be to see what Terry thinks because he's the one that's going to be living there the longest or his group is. But that's not to say it overwhelms anything other than, you know, a point one percent benefit if it's an even Steven deal. Rick?
Yeah, I, I think that's good information. We should be celebrating that we've got two potential sites that are pretty equal. So that gives us the opportunity to go with the owner's representative and the architects and the developer and the builder and all of them and sort of see which one they like the best. I could, I said earlier, I could live with either side. And we got to look at what choosing one site does to the other side or choosing side A does to the other part of the property. Cause both of them have properties alongside of them as well. So, but I think it's good news tonight. And if the water table doesn't allow a basement, that's unfortunate, but we move forward. And that's why we're doing our due diligence. So good report.
I just have one additional comment and I'm sure this has been taken into account, but we did just receive an email at some point about taking into account response time. So hopefully that will be when you look at those two sites. If you're looking at the physical site and they're kind of equal, just looking at what response times would be from both of those as well.
Yeah. Lisa, Lisa, I'd like to address that real quick. You know, it's interesting because this is something that's obviously been brought up in the committee. And the, the site in Old Town right now would be a little bit tougher. But as the school grows and goes in there and, and, you know, a year and a half, then obviously they're going to be that much closer to the school and towards that whole development area up there. So we definitely have it in our minds and we're trying to think of not only today, but what it would, how that would change, you know, a couple of years from now. One question I guess I have for you, Brian, on the committee. It would be great if we could get this thing started, you know, ASAP so that we just don't have more delay. So if we could schedule that meeting here in the near future, that'd be great.
Yep. Yeah. We'll, we'll try to get some dates out first thing tomorrow.
Okay. Super. Thanks.
Brian, this, this Rick, we might, if it would help because some people are out of state in that. We could come in here. I'd come in with Aaron and the others soon as we can and get on a Zoom where we're in a room together and get all the people we can.
Yep. Yeah. I think there's a potential for a mixed, mixed kind of meeting like that. Thank you.
Great. I'm just out of town next week, Wednesday through Friday, but I can make it work on Monday.
Yep. Well, we'll see if there's maybe a window for the end of this week or maybe the beginning of next week.
Sounds great. Thanks.
That sounds great. One of the things going, spinning off of Lisa's comment and when you're looking at, at accessibility is consider what happens if the railroad doesn't let us go across there on the artisan site. And I don't, again, I don't care which one it is, but I'd, I'd hate to see us think, okay, we've got access because we've got the, the roundabout, I'm going to call it, around Old Town. And that to me would probably create great access. But are we ever going to really able to get it or use it? Or is it going to be out there two or three years? And I don't know if you want to make a comment to that, Don, or not.
Yeah. Yes, I can. I mean, as I look at that, I mean, we're going to have the existing access through Old Town until we get the new access across the, you know, with the parkway or not. We will never be have no access. So until the parkway goes, which when we have that, we'll, we'll know the outcome of the railroad situation where we have both of them or just one. But there's no equation where we don't have access to the parkway or Main Street, existing Main Street.
Great. Yep. And I think the other, the other thing that was, that I learned through this process is there's a difference fundamentally about how the police respond and how the fire department responds. Where the, the fire department is trying to find a geographically centered location because they're responding to a call from their station 95% of the time. Whereas most of the, the police response units are actually already on the street on patrol when they're responding to those calls. So they're actually coming from hopefully much closer or, you know, they're already in, in route somewhere when they're responding to those calls.
Great. Good comment. Thank you. That is insightful for me.
I'll just add my thought on the, on the site. I also think it's great that we have two sites that work. And I would ask the, the chief to really kind of weigh in as, as we're trying to select that site and then kind of justify, which I like this site better for, for accessibility, for, for the services you provide. I think that at this point, both sites are good. So I think you need to kind of help us take the lead on what's best for, for me and on that.
So Rick, Aaron and Brian, do you guys got a game plan on how to proceed?
Yep.
Okay. Good deal. All right. Let's take a break and we'll reconvene at six. Rick, Aaron, and Brian, do you guys got a game plan on how to proceed?
Yep.
Okay, good deal. All right, let's take a break, and we'll reconvene six.
Mayor, if I may, can I? And appreciate Commissioner, or Councilmember Hanson's opportunity to have a conversation about this at staff level. We did talk a little bit, and we are happy bringing forward some land use code recommendations after some vetting with not, not only the, kind of the public, but also with the development community, because I think there is gonna be a little bit of pushback in that arena. And I know that we've gotta balance some things. It's one of these areas that we're encouraging and hoping for more density. And so if you, if you put in more open space, it de facto kind of pushes the density back down. So there's, there's a little trade off there that we have to consider. And if it's a large, what we've talked about is maybe if there's a, if you're looking at a large regional, you know, they're a mile by mile project, and there's a multi-family component, maybe the rest of that project can carry some of that open space for that multifamily, instead of, instead of applying it directly to the multifamily individual piece. So there's, there's a lot of nuances to this, and we, we are up to the task, but we, so we'll, we'll be bringing back some ideas and thoughts on that, and probably some kind of public outreach component of this as well, so that we can kind of, kind of narrow in on this one particular thing, so that we can get some good feedback and, and make appropriate code changes.
Brett, do you want to, or does it make sense, I'm looking to Wes, you, and Kevin, and Matt on this, should we, as we did with the police station, have sort of a committee where we put you and another councilperson on there to sort of vet this out before it gets to us, so there can be, you know, a discussion of what's going on, and you guys sort of beat it up before we bring it to council?
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be comfortable with that. You know, staff can take a first pass at it, and then, then we can iterate a little bit, and then, and then bring it to the council. I'm, I'm comfortable being on a subcommittee or liaison or some of that nature, yeah.
Aaron, I'm, I'm gonna look at you, unfortunately, because you've been the most involved with land use and that kind of thing. Would you mind being on that committee with Brett?
I, I could. I'm about committed out, but yes.
If you, if you don't, that's fine.
No, it, it would be, it, it's fine. I, I imagine this will be a pretty short commitment, so I'm good with that.
Okay, thanks. Thanks a lot, Aaron.
I have one council report after we're finished up, just to let you know.
Good, thanks. Thank you. And I do too. I'm going last here. So, Brett, are you good with that?
I'm, I'm good with that.
Is everybody, Melissa, you want to roll call?
Mayor Mark Sukup.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Rick Collins.
Here.
Councilmember Erin Pearson.
Here.
Councilmember Lisa Lake.
Here.
Councilmember Brett Hanson.
Here.
All right, public comment. Melissa, do we have any public comment?
I don't think there's anybody here.
All right. Consent agenda payables. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I, and I recuse myself. Melissa, I can't hear you.
Go back to amendments to the agenda.
Amendments to the agenda, yes.
We did a bunch of it in executive, I mean, in a work session.
So should we be saying something?
Yes, sir. So with your permission, we'd like, our recommendation from staff is that 8A, B, and C be removed from the agenda.
Great.
So if you, if you don't mind.
So do we, do we do a motion on that?
Yes, please.
So.
Motion 8A, B, and C be removed from the agenda.
First?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
8B, ABC. Okay, got it. All right. Consent agenda other. Approval of the minutes and resolution approving intergovernmental agreement for COVID-19. Any questions anybody in council have? Okay, do I have a fir?
I'll give you a motion for 5A to approve the town council minutes from last time.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Motion Resolution 61, resolution of moving the intergovernmental agreement for COVID-19 test funding.
Second.
Wes, does Wes want to speak on that for a sec?
No, that, that was part of that motion, and he, he didn't have anything that he said.
Correct, that was part of your consent, unless there's interest.
Unless you, unless you want, oh. So, council reports, I know you have on Brett, but do you have anything, Lisa?
I just wanna make a quick comment. Yesterday, I met with Wes and Robert to talk about the code of conduct that we had initially discussed a couple of meetings ago. So I just wanted to keep you all apprised of that. And at this point, we are looking into getting samples or examples from other communities that have been successful. And once we get some of those, we can start working on a draft for ours. I mentioned to Rick a little bit earlier about probably running it by him, since I know he had expressed some interest in that as well, prior to bringing it back to the whole council.
Awesome. Rick, you got anything on, okay, Brett, you had a report?
I included a report in the packet, but before I get to that, I'll just mention that with the Metro District Committee, we will probably, for next council meeting, have a report we'll be submitting with a list of recommendations on some tweaks to the Timothéon Model Service Plan. In particular, I'll, I'll note that the committee felt that the council should examine, they didn't feel comfortable making a concrete recommendation regarding the regional improvement in mill levy, that they would like council to, to reexamine that issue, and you'll be able to see more of that in the report. But I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. And then, I submitted a report that's in the packet. Basically, what I was thinking with this is, is, as I mentioned in the report, is looking to find ways to bring elements of the comprehensive plan and the vision for the town into a little bit greater harmony through tweaks of the land use code. And this is something I've started some discussions with staff, and I outlined some recommended actions to staff to start looking at. It's not a, it's not a simple process, it's not as simple as we're gonna up, you know, the percentage of the open space requirement. We don't wanna make an artificial constraint that's, that's too rigid, but, but I do hope to see some, some substantial change in those discussions. So, I'll open it up to any others that have input, questions, thoughts on what I wrote.
So, so my understanding, Brett, is that you're proposing that, that, that staff take a look at the land use code with the guidance that you have here, and come back with recommendations or changes or whatever to us, the council?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
And the basic concept is wherever there's higher density housing, there should be higher open space requirements, is the basic idea.
I like, you know, the one thing that we've had, I think, the most angst over in this, in, as, as my term or as, as mayor from the town, is R3 and R4 approvals. I mean, we've always had the most public comment, the most concern. And so, I agree that that should indicate to us that we ought to take a relook at it at the very least, and maybe make some changes at the very most, is my thoughts. I'm looking around for any other.
No, I, I would second that, and I think it's a good idea, with a couple of recent examples with Timothéon Ranch and that, if we required more open space for multifamily housing, it would build in, into the system a catchall that would probably create more buffer zones, if you will, between single family houses and multi-housing. And I think that's what a lot of folks are asking for. So, I think you're on the right track.
Mayor, if I may, can I?
Sure, Matt.
Jump in?
Absolutely.
And I appreciate Commissioner, or Councilmember Hanson's opportunity to have a conversation about this at staff level. We did talk a little bit, and we are happy bringing forward some land use code recommendations after some vetting with not, not only the, kind of the public, but also with the development community, because I think there is gonna be a little bit of pushback in that arena. And I know that we've gotta balance some things. It's one of these areas that we're encouraging and hoping for more density. And so if you, if you put in more open space, it de facto kind of pushes the density back down. So there's, there's a little trade off there that we have to consider. And if it's a large, what we've talked about is maybe if there's a, if you're looking at a large regional, you know, they're a mile by mile project, and there's a multi-family component, maybe the rest of that project can carry some of that open space for that multifamily, instead of, instead of applying it directly to the multifamily individual piece. So there's, there's a lot of nuances to this, and we, we are up to the task, but we, so we'll, we'll be bringing back some ideas and thoughts on that, and probably some kind of public outreach component of this as well, so that we can kind of, kind of narrow in on this one particular thing, so that we can get some good feedback and, and make appropriate code changes.
Brett, do you want to, or does it make sense, I'm looking to Wes, you, and, and Kevin, and Matt on this, should we, as we did with the police station, have sort of a committee where we put you and another councilperson on there to sort of vet this out before it gets to us, so there can be, you know, a discussion of what's going on, and you guys sort of beat it up before we bring it to council?
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be comfortable with that. You know, staff can take a first pass at it, and then, then we can iterate a little bit, and then, and then bring it to the council. I'm, I'm comfortable being on a subcommittee or liaison or some of that nature, yeah.
Aaron, I'm, I'm gonna look at you, unfortunately, because you've been the most involved with land use and that kind of thing. Would you mind being on that committee with Brett?
I, I could. I'm about committed out, but yes.
If you, if you don't, that's fine.
No, it, it would be, it, it's fine. I, I imagine this will be a pretty short commitment, so I'm good with that.
Okay, thanks. Thanks a lot, Aaron.
I have one council report after we're finished up, just to let you know.
Good, thanks. Thank you. And I do too. I'm going last here. So, Brett, are you good with that?
I'm, I'm good with that.
Is everybody in council good with that?
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, yep, thanks, Brett. Aaron?
I just wanted to let the, the rest of the council know that we had our first Park Rec Post Committee, I guess is what we're calling it. Park Recreation, Open Space and Trails is what Post is for. And we had our first meeting, it was great, we have a really good crew on board. And I thought it was a very good introductory meeting, people seemed excited to be there. We definitely have a variety of backgrounds and different areas of town. So I think we're gonna end up coming up with a really, a really good recommendations out of that committee. We're having our next meeting at the end of this month, just a couple of weeks, I guess. And we're gonna be discussing reservoir policy ideas. It's gonna be a, it's gonna be a good meeting. So, definitely one of the things that people are most interested in.
Awesome, thanks. Thanks for working on that committee, Aaron.
You bet.
All right. And the, our last committee, the Finance Committee, met a month and a half ago or so. And we had a great meeting, great people, they're really smart. And one of the things that, that they, after reviewing the financials and stuff, suggested is that we take a look at our financing and see if it's the best that we can get. And there's, it's a complicated issue, there's a lot of stuff involved. And I think what they were suggesting to the council and asking if the council would want to proceed, and I'm gonna ask you to help me with this, Wes, but is there are companies, people out there called municipal?
Advisors.
Pardon?
Municipal advisors.
Municipal advisors. And that, they, so the question to the council is, do we want to engage a municipal advisor? Most of them won't charge anything unless they actually are able to get a better loan rate than what we've got. And, and, and then maybe what we do is assign to them the duty of getting an RFP for that out, and then come back with a recommendation for an advisor that the council approves or, or selects. And you were in that meeting, Wes, do you, want you to make any other comments?
Yeah, I mean, so it, there appears, there was some conversation at the Finance Committee about whether it's prudent to bring in a municipal advisor to review the town's current debt portfolio, take a look at those terms, and to see what, if anything, could be done. I think there was a pretty robust discussion about the, the yield maintenance agreement, as well as the no-call provisions. But I also think there was a desire by some of the committee members to see what if any, what if anything could be done by engaging a municipal advisor around those services. So, I think the steps, as I would understand them, would be, do you, does the council have an interest in this? And if so, then should staff work in tangent to, with the committee to develop a scope of work, and then put that scope as a part of an RFP, and put that out there to see if there's any interested parties in taking a look at that, so.
Okay, so, comments?
Yeah, I, I guess with the no-call provision, we have a couple of years that before we could even do anything with this debt. We can't, we can't pay it off early, we basically have a prepayment penalty for, for more easy terms. So, I guess I don't see the, I don't see the point in spending money to hire someone to look, to see if we could do better when we can't get out of this obligation that we're in anyway.
So, Aaron, usually these people do not charge you anything unless they actually get a new loan. And one of the things that that they, after reviewing the financials and stuff, suggested is that we take a look at our financing and see if it's the best that we can get. And there's it's a complicated issue. There's a lot of stuff involved. And I think what they were suggesting to the council and asking if the council would want to proceed, and I'm going to ask you to help me with this, Wes, but is there are companies, people out there called municipal?
Advisors.
Pardon?
Municipal advisors.
Municipal advisors. And that they so the question to the council is, do we want to engage a municipal advisor? Most of them won't charge anything unless they actually are able to get a better loan rate than what we've got. And 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 then maybe what we do is assign to them the duty of getting an RFP for that out and then come back with a recommendation for an advisor that the council approves or selects. And you were in that meeting, Wes. Why don't you make any other comments?
Yeah, I mean, so it there appears there was some conversation at the Finance Committee about whether it's prudent to bring in a municipal advisor to review the town's current debt portfolio, take a look at those terms, and to see what, if anything, could be done. I think there was a pretty robust discussion about the the yield maintenance agreement as well as the no call provisions. But I also think there was a desire by some of the committee members to see what if any what if anything could be done by engaging a municipal advisor around those services. So I think the steps, as I would understand them, would be, do you does the council have an interest in this? And if so, then should staff work in tangent to with the committee to develop a scope of work and then put that scope as a part of an RFP and put that out there to see if there's any interested parties in taking a look at that? So.
Okay, so comments?
Yeah, I I guess with the no call provision, we have a couple of years that before we could even do anything with this debt, we can't, we can't pay it off early. We basically have a prepayment penalty for for more easy terms. So I guess I don't see that. I don't see the point in spending money to hire someone to look to see if we could do better when we can't get out of this obligation that we're in anyway.
So, Aaron, usually these people do not charge you anything unless they actually get a new loan.
Okay. I don't know. I still don't see the point of it.
I go ahead. I I mean, I guess the the point of the committee was they may be interested in refinancing, they may be interested in changing some terms, they may be interesting interested in a host of different other things that would be beneficial to the town and why not explore the possibility? And if it if it ends up going down a rabbit hole, what do we lose? Nothing, really.
Okay, we can agree to disagree on this one.
Okay.
I have a question about so all of the the debt that we currently have. Is any of it negotiable for different rates based on our contracts with with all of that right now?
Not currently. There's there are three, three different obligations that are outstanding. There are two with the the TDA. There's one with the town, the COP transaction. All three of the all three of the instruments have call protection built into them, which which is standard in municipal financing. I've never seen a deal that doesn't have call protection. But the first of those, the call protection runs through December of 2022. I I provided a summary to the Finance Committee that I don't have in front of me, but the other ones are are a little bit later in time. I think there was maybe one that was 2024 and one that was 2025. So the the town and the in the TDA are locked locked into those obligations through those call protection periods. And then it it the after the call protection date, there's a what's referred to as a yield maintenance fee period, which is it's a pre penalty, I mean, a prepayment penalty. One, one thing that I will mention is that if if the town or the or the URA did want to move forward and and look at options, there there could be a way to get get some other potential bidder to to try to structure a deal as is an advanced refunding. There'd be issues with that. Those aren't currently allowed under federal IRS regulations, and Christine could probably speak more to this, but I have seen projects where clients have structured structured an advanced refunding as a taxable obligation until the the call protection date runs and then it converts to tax exempted, you know, going forward after that. But but usually it's underwriters or MAs or or other other gurus from within the bank that are that are trying to figure out how to structure one of those deals.
So from a a legal standpoint, is there a benefit to going out and trying to do this? And while I realize that there's no fee for the potential advisor, there's certainly staff time, Robert's time, Wes's time, whoever else, Lisa, Christine, that would go into this, which if if it's not something that you feel is viable, I don't know that we'd want to spend staff time doing something. But I guess that would be a question.
You know, I think, Counselor, I think that it that at the root of your question is is a a request for a cost benefit judgment, and and I don't feel qualified to to make a prediction there. I mean, I mean, I think what the mayor is suggesting is that that there there may be an MA or or more than one that's that's willing to run some analysis on their own dime. And and candidly, I I haven't I haven't encountered one before, but that certainly doesn't mean that that they don't exist and that that's not an option and that that couldn't be one of the one of the terms that the town requires. I haven't I haven't seen it, but but it sounds like maybe the mayor has.
And give you an example. So the call provisions in '22. Well, you can go to them and say, look, we'll we'll extend this loan out to '29 instead of, boy, nobody's moving around, to '22. And they may be interested or change a term that's in there that gets us a lower rate. They may not. I mean, there's there's no way to tell until you ask. And one of the things, you know, I've been in finance for 40 years. The one thing I have found is you always ask, because a bank will have an alternative or a decision. You don't know if they got a liquidity problem and would love to give some cash in or something and get a refinance from another bank. So you never know what they're going to say until you actually ask. And I don't think and by hiring somebody that's getting paid like a half a point extra, a quarter point for finding the loan, which is sort of the standard, why not do it if it saves us a percentage point or 100 basis points in in doing this is is? And basically, the person, we have a banker who's done a number of these, and it's it was his recommendation that we at least take a look at it. And he says, you know, people come all the time and and ask to refinance and stuff.
For municipals, like municipalities?
Yeah, Rick.
Yeah, I would just nothing ventured, nothing gained. This this thing, we've got over 70 million with the same bank. It doesn't cost us a dime to get a municipal advisor that works with this campus bank on other loans to go in and say, you know, the town of Timothée is asking for this to be renegotiated. If they say no, then he comes back or she comes back and says, they said no. We we lose nothing. But when you're talking 70 million over the next, what, nine years? You're talking about a lot of money. I just I think it's a no brainer that we should look into it. This is what some of the people that live in our community are saying as far as banker and a guy that actually works for Wells Fargo came to the meeting and said, no, you you just go ahead and ask. That's all you can do. Now, we could send Wes in as the town manager to ask, or we could send Mark in as the mayor. Or we could send the police chief in. But the best thing is there's municipal advisors out there, and they're going to say, we want a piece of this if we can't get this renegotiated. And all of a sudden, we save a million for the town. It'd be 50,000 well spent. So all of my position is we should try for it. Nothing ventured, nothing gained.
I think the key to me is is we're supposed to be stewards, and do we know we're getting the best rate at this day on these notes? And I don't know. And and I think I have a really good handle on what's going on out there as a CPA, but I don't know if this is the best rate or not. And if if we don't send out and try, and we'll do it again in '22, and we'll do it again in '24, I would hope, and and however that certain falls out. Do you have any comments, Brett?
I mean, yeah, I'll just I'll just add, I know I've I've heard mention around the community as well, just, I don't know, I don't know if concerns the right word, but just just thoughts about the debt that the town has. And it is an issue that that not an insignificant number of people in the town think about. And so if it's no cost to us, I mean, I imagine one of these municipal advisors, they'd be able to tell pretty quickly that this is a dead end, and they're not going to spend hours and hours of their time and staff time on something that's very obviously a dead end. And and who knows, maybe we wouldn't find a case if if with interest rates that it makes sense to pay a prepayment penalty because we get the savings back on a lower interest rate. It it never hurts to at least ask. And then if nothing else, we can we can report back to the community when they ask this that we we've continuously dug into this. So I'm I'm fine with 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 what's being proposed with with a municipal advisor giving us help on that.
Okay.
I'd like to add one more thing, if I could.
Sure, Aaron.
With doing it, as long as we're not spending town money on on doing it. If somebody wants to do it for free, then that's just fine. But I don't want a hefty bill for for a consultant to figure this out when with the call protection, we can't do anything. I mean, it it's locked in there. So it's it's not that we can pay to get out of it. We just can't get out of it until we get to that to that prepayment point. So as long as we're not spending any outside town resources money wise, then then I can go along with it.
Okay. Well, and that's part of the RFP process is that the Finance Committee will set up an RFP process to and will know exactly, and they'll give us a recommendation. And if it comes back that there's a cost to it, then the council can vote on whether they want to incur that cost or not incur that cost. And if it comes back, so that that'd be my my thoughts. Okay, so I I think we got an agreement of at least go out and get the RFP, and then we'll go from there. Okay, good deal. Business 7A resolution, a resolution entering into a lower Pooter augmentation. And should do we do we keep these separate? Because they seem like there's so much the same. Do you keep them separate even though Resolution 63 is virtually the same?
So what staff's recommending is that we actually present the whole both items together, but when it comes time to vote, we'll need, well, I don't know, I'll defer to Robert on the vote for two motions or one, but I think staff definitely wants to present one, one staff report on both items, so.
You can vote together unless it seems like a controversial topic where you're going to vote one up and one down.
Yeah. Okay, so.
I think Brian's ready to help you with that.
Brian's doing this. Okay, Brian, go ahead.
Cam, I am ready to help you with a faithful assist from Mr. Toronto on that. This is a this is a little bit more of an engineering type project than a a park planning type project. But so I wanted to just talk a little bit about the the background here. So we we do what our goal with developing the non pot system was is to, number one, not use potable water on the the reservoir landscape. We've explored many options over the last two and a half years, starting with a floating pump out in the middle of the reservoir and and many, many iterations of of different engineered solutions to to make a non pot system out there work. This one is really the most beneficial, I think, we found for a number of reasons. I won't go into the pros and cons of all the things we've 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 done in the past, but significant to say that they were much more challenged for both operations and and kind of papering them up legally for the water use. So we have found, we have actually been working over the last year to get the two wells that the town has drilled at the reservoir included in the lower Pooter augmentation plan. So that's an existing augmentation plan. And what that does is when you, I'm just going to simplify this, and I'm sure Don will happily jump in with some more details. But when you pump water out of a well located at Timothée Reservoir, that water is would eventually make its way into the Pooter River. So you're taking water that was over the natural course of history, going to the Pooter River, and you're taking it out and you're using it on the surface at the at the reservoir. So there's a time period where that water doesn't hit the river right away. It actually takes 31 years for it to fully recognize the impact of the river. So the Lower Pooter Augmentation Plan is a plan that was set up many, many years ago by the Lower Pooter Augmentation Company to allow their farmers to drill wells and then have a one operational body that would control all those timed releases and water rights concerns for the group of the group of farmers that were using these wells. Since that time of the inception of the plan, they've actually included a couple other wells. We will be the first municipal wells that are being included, but they have a couple other wells they've included for a different some different mostly ag uses, but a couple of other uses as well. So this plan is a existing plan that's set up that we would buy into. And what that means is that they will handle all of the accounting, they will handle all of the reverse flow, the flows that need to be released back into the river at the appropriate times. They have the facilities enacted or constructed in order to be able to deliver the water at the appropriate place at the appropriate time. And then we we pay a upfront fee to join the plan, which includes all of their work to get the plan set up and all of the infrastructure they needed to construct in order to enact the plan. And then we pay an annual operation depending fee, depending on how much water we're pumping and what that tail looks like in the the 31 years. So that's a that was a mouthful for me. Just conceptually, there are questions about, I think, the benefit for the town to join this plan is that they don't have to provide any of that infrastructure or the accounting ability to make to make that work. So does anybody have any questions about the plan or the need for the plan or how the plan operates?
Yeah, go ahead, Aaron.
I just have one.
Go ahead, Aaron, sorry.
In order to water that that area in there, oh, no, sorry, this augmentation line. Never mind.
I I think it's a fair question. I think we're going to talk about everything all together.
Okay, no, I'm good for the moment. I'll jump in in a sec.
Okay.
So go ahead, keep going, Brian. I got a bunch of questions eventually, so I'll and it looks like Aaron does too. So why don't you go keep going?
Okay, so that's that's the first agenda item is our inclusion into the Pooter Plan. The second agenda item is the first phase of construction for that non potable water system. And so that's the the second agenda item, 7B. And what that is, is that's it. We've had three different groups price this, and they were all well qualified to perform the work. They the bids came in relatively close. Coyote Ridge Construction was the low bidder there, a company that does work for the town and in the town. I think we have every confidence they're going to do a great job out there. But what this is, is this is building the first vault, which is a underground vault, basically, that will house the pump and all of the other associated, the backflow, the the computer system that will monitor the the pumping and control the pumping.
Actually, it won't have the pump, remember, right? It won't have the pump.
It will not have.
Yep. Because the pumps, the pump's separate and the and evolves right next to the fitless adapter. But anyhow, it has all the metering and everything and all the telemetry that we need for 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 dealing with this thing.
Yep, and then and then the connection from the well site, which is down near the the headworks and the outfall of the Timothée Timothée Reservoir Canal, and then piping it up to our our existing field. And then so then we'll be able to put put the non pot water on the field. And then there's a second well that we would be constructing similar improvements to early next year to get that online as well. Those two will tie together and then provide us with the appropriate amount of pressure and flow to to do the irrigation, both on the existing turf field. And then we've got a little bit of a a need or not a need, but we have a little bit of a buffer space there where we'll be able to put water on any other improvements that we would need to that we would install up there. So one, so that's the kind of the summary of the non pot system. Now, I would like to just talk a little bit about the reservoir in itself as as a as a Timothée Park. So we've been working with the reservoir company. We signed this extent this lease in 2016, in December of 2016, actually. The lease term is for 15 years with a renewal of five years. We have talked to their manager about maybe trying to extend the term pursuant to our last discussion at the capital improvement workshop. And then and so we have a a memo kind of outlining the terms that we would like into them. Their board is meeting actually tomorrow morning, so we were hoping to have some information prior to this meeting, but the timing just didn't quite work out. But we'll we'll be getting with the manager shortly after that, probably later this week, to talk about the the findings that they had in their meeting. But what we're asking for is currently it's one five year renewal, and that will be and then that's only if we can negotiate the appropriate lease term or financial terms of that extension. But we're actually in that's the option for that renewal is at either party's discretion. We're asking for two five year renewals at the town's sole discretion, and then to keep the term at the existing or the the cost of the existing term, which is just an increase in the CPI every year on the lease rate. So those are into the the reservoir company's board, and we'll hopefully have some information for those on those shortly. The other operational thing that we I wanted to touch on was the the use of this turf field. Right now, we're not, well, obviously, this year, we haven't had any events out there. We did have the, you know, the drive in fireworks that were, I think there was, I heard that there was 30 or 40 cars out there, but obviously, nobody was using the turf field at that. We have seen, you know, small groups using that turf field. However, the reservoir property is still in the county. So in order to have any large events in the county category. in order to have any large events in the county county categorizes that as a group over forty people. You have to have a special events permit and the county limits three per any individual property per year without it becoming a actual special events venue, which is a whole another challenge as far as as what the infrastructure would be required for that. So that's kind of been our the limit in the past. There's two ways to get around that as outlined in the staff report. There's one having the Timothy Reservoir Company annex the property into the town. Then the town will have the jurisdiction over awarding when those special events could be held and what what the criteria for a special event permit would be. And we have discussed that. I think we probably discussed it with them for over the for the last four years. And we did have a discussion with that temp with the manager recently about that, and he seemed open to it. But I think that's kind of a longer term solution. I don't think that's going to happen. I mean, I could be optimistic and say that it's going to happen in the next year, but I think, you know, there's a lot of details to be ironed out there. There's another opportunity, which is called the location and extent process through Larama County. That's actually required by state statute. And I won't bore you with the details of that, but it's a it's an opportunity for us to go in front of the county planning commission and say, this is what we want to do with this property as part of a park system for the town. And we'd like to take it into the town's jurisdiction to operate that that park facility. And this this location extent also applies to other utilities and lots of other things. And we had a Matt and I had a conversation with the planner, the long term planner, long range planner at Larama County. And he he didn't see any problems with us pursuing that. That is probably a three to four month process, I would guess. So we would have that, you know, with direction from the council to kind of undertake that. I think we would have that, you know, and definitely safely in the spring of next year. And the the one key caveat or not caveat to that, but the one key detail is if for some reason their planning commission were to turn this down, our council has the ability to override their decision. So there's even though there's hoops to jump through, there's nothing that would really prevent us from from seeking that approval. So with all of that.
Brian, can I add one thing?
Please.
So the other thing is, is Brian has been talking a lot about the turf area as far as a special event type of use. It does see an inordinate amount of use from the the residents of the community that actually have permits and that actually use the reservoir on a weekly, daily basis. So they use it for picnicking, for flying kites, for lots of uses out there. It is a is a valuable asset out there in a and I'll say a sea of weeds and overgrowth kind of natural areas. This is a nice respite area for the citizens to actually use when they're out on their boats or out stand up paddle boarding or whatever else. So there is a there is a definite need and a use for it. The other aspect is in the pros plan. The reservoir is a highly sought after. One of the main goals of the pros plan is to develop the reservoir and to create usable open space out there for recreation for the community and the citizens of Timneth. So it's it's in that long range plan and it is a much needed asset for the community.
Hey, Brian, question. So to get Larama County to approve more than three events, you went through, you know, a three month process, you said, that had to go through Larama County. But then you made this statement that whenever they come to a decision, we could override it?
That's correct. And I believe that is per the state statute for the location and extent process.
So let me understand. So if they say, we aren't going to let you use this site any more than three events a year. We have to wait till they make that decision and then this council can override it? Or can we do it right now?
You have to wait till they make that decision. You have to go through the process, basically, and then then you would have the ability that your council, our council would have the ability to overturn their decision.
And at that point, at that point, how many events could we have?
However, we want to present the the plan to the county, we would be able to enact that plan.
And the county couldn't override it?
That's correct.
Is that is that your understanding, Robert? Okay.
Yeah, it's a one time process that we go through and then we present our plan and they can either accept that or not. And then even if they don't do it, this council can say, we're going to implement that plan. And from that point forward, as long as we're we're implementing that plan, we can have, you know, as many events as as we want consistent with the plan that we put forward.
It seems like the planning commission, the Larama County Planning Commission is a bit superfluous in this decision.
I think our neighbor has the same issue next door to us.
Yeah, I I think the purpose of it is just to facilitate coordination, but it but at the end of the process to to reserve the right for municipalities to purchase purchase park land and and use it the way that they see fit. But it's to it's to force a conversation with the county at the beginning of the process.
Okay. Aaron, you had a comment?
Yeah, actually, this is perfectly timed up. So what I've talked to a couple of the other post committee members, and they were asking me, why can't we use this land for some more of the organized events, some of the recreational programming like soccer, having using it for soccer fields. We have a big parking lot. It's not in anybody's way. We could use it for something like that. So either way, whether we approve this these wells or we have to go the the more expensive route with getting a water tap from the water district and then paying, you know, potable water instead of paying for the pumping of the well. Either way, it seems like at this juncture, we're going to have to go one one way or the other, or we lose all all the all of that money that we put in up to this point on that on that piece of land.
Yeah, I would propose that as we structure the plan, we would bring forward to Larama County. We would probably say that things like soccer practice and maybe even game days would not qualify as a special event. It would constitute the normal operations of the reservoir park. And then a special event would have some larger threshold where we would, you know, have a have a permitting and review process for that.
So I want to be real clear. So we could hold a hundred soccer games over there because each one of those is considered an event. So we could have a hundred soccer games over there and hold five or six concerts and whatever else we want to put on that. And by July of next year, we will have been able to, at worst case, pass through this council approval of that. Is that a correct statement?
Yes, that is a correct statement.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I just want to make sure the water from the two wells is going to water just the land over by the reservoir then?
That's correct.
Anything, Brad?
I have one. Sorry, one more question, sorry. Brian, so will we have excess water, do you think, from those two wells that we could use then for future use if if, you know, if we want to expand out there?
Yes, the our inclusion in the plan equates to about eighteen acre feet of consumptive use. So for a turf field, you're you're using about three acre feet per acre. We've got about four point seven five acres of turf out there. So we've got roughly another three or four acre feet that we can use on any other improvements in that area.
Okay, thank you.
We would not be able to take the water off site of the reservoir property.
Okay, thank you.
Do I have a motion?
I move to approve. Gosh, I'm not on the right page. I move to approve A and B. Sorry, I'm not in.
Resolution, let me help you out. Resolution sixty two and sixty three, Aaron.
I move to approve resolution sixty two and sixty three.
Thank you. Do I have a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion carry. Oops, sorry. Go ahead, Lisa. I'm sorry.
Okay. It's it carries five oh. Go ahead, Lisa.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Your mic's off.
Sorry. In the future, on the the report page, could we have the resolution number added in that so that if we're going to read it, it would just be on there? Would that be something we could add in? Thank you.
Okay. I think we've done eight A, A B, eight B, eight C, eight D. Should we proceed on Wes or should we table that or what would you like think we should do?
I think it's the council's purview for AD. So included in the packet is a letter from your attorney. And so this is a matter for the council to discuss whether to move forward at this point or some later point.
So Aaron, I know you want, do you did you want to be here in person or is this okay?
This is good enough. That's this is say, yeah, this is good enough. I'm glad that I can be part of this discussion.
Okay, great. So I think at this point, the question is, is do we do an RFP, which I'm almost assuming absolutely yes by everybody? And then the question is, is who should do the RFP? Should we do it internally or should we hire an outside firm to help us go about and looking for this position, which is a specialized position? So at that, I'll just open it up for us all to discuss. Go ahead, Lisa.
So I guess my first question for all of us would be, do we want to continue in the same way where we hire an outside firm where they assign someone or are we looking at doing an internal hire internally?
Great, great question. And and the RFPs I've seen for for legal, they put both in. So they put employee and firm as people that can go for the RFP. And so I don't think we have to, at this point, make that decision. But Wes, is my is my understanding correct there or do we have to have it separate?
So I'll make my comment, but I'm certainly going to defer to Robert. So I think the RFPs that I've seen permit what in essence is a firm, you know, that has multiple either principals or associates attached to it or what 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 kind of functions as a sole proprietor. So it's still all at ten ninety nine, but the RFP would be geared for people who either want to put themselves forward because they have their own LLC, but they're a sole proprietor or they actually are a firm like WBA. I I think if you make the decision that you're going to go down to doing something internal, like it's a W two position, you would want to probably go about that in a little different in a little different way. Because, yeah, but having said that, if you if you decide to engage an outside firm to help you do that, that firm could help you navigate that particular issue as well. So they could either help you recruit for something that's internal or perhaps, I don't know, we'll see what the interest is. I'd have to do some digging, but if there's recruiting agencies out there that that can help you put together an RFP or I'm not sure, but we could also try to explore that a little bit too. So but I I would defer, Robert's been around at this game longer than anybody. He might have some insights on 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 what that looks like as well.
There's there are so many different ways that you can you can slice it. Our firm routinely receives all all manner of RFPs. So what what I see more of is the more open ended RFP where where you you put it out there to the field to structure a competitive response. You know, Timneth is in this kind of in between phase where almost every jurisdiction that I'm aware of that is that has a population that's smaller than Timneth has outside counsel that they engage, it's a firm. And then you're you're just getting to the population size where you'll see some some municipalities start looking for in house employees. I I think the majority at if at this size would probably still be reaching out to to outside firms rather than because I think you're in a gap. I think you're more than one full time FTE, but but maybe a little bit less than two two full time FTEs if you're if you're looking to fill it with W two positions. So I I think it's.
So help me with that, Robert. So if we're at or we're above one FTE, wouldn't that indicate that it'd be cheaper to, if you can get the right person, cheaper to have an employee lawyer rather than a firm lawyer? And I'm not pushing for either. I'm just trying to ask the question.
Yeah, I I don't think it necessarily would. At least what our firm, if our firm were were responding to an RFP where we're where we were being asked that question, our response to you would be that that we we think that our firm brings more expertise than you could hire in house. If you were going to, you'd need to hire probably two attorneys. And by the time you pay for their parabene, pay for all their all their benefits and and pay for the the outside specialist help that they're going to need in in areas that are likely outside their expertise, that that we think it's a wash. And I'm just, I'm telling you that.
Yeah, I'm here.
That's how firms are going to pitch it to you. You you'll have to make your own decision about whether you think you could find. That's why I said I think you're above one full time FTE, whether you're whether you're at two full time FTEs or or not. You know, you'd you'd have to make the decision based on on your anticipated budget going forward. But I think if you're if you're gonna, if you're going for two two full time FTEs, it's it's just, I think you're just in a tough, tough position. Windsor is one that has two full time FTEs that they they have a firm that provides those services. So you're kind of right, right at that crossroads, I think.
Okay, Aaron, I know you had comments on this. Do you want to comment?
Yeah, I I I first off, I appreciate very much, Robert, what you've done here in the past. You've been with the town for a long time, seven years, eight years, nine years, I guess, your firm or maybe even longer than that. So I just want to thank you for for your service. Obviously, you're not ending today and you're sticking with us through January thirty first. But but I I felt that's necessary for the for the council to recognize your efforts. Secondly, I just want to make sure I think a a robust RFP is great. Let's put it out there, see, see what we can do. If we decide we want to do it in house, that's fine. And have Wes lead lead that up. But if you if we want to hire somebody, if we can do it, you know, in a speedy manner. I think we need to make sure we're picking somebody that's very strong in municipal law, that knows what we do with core requests, what we do with land use, what we do with just municipal government. It's a it's a different entity, and I think we need somebody that's well, either a person or or a company that can provide can provide us with expertise on all things in running a municipality. There's a lot of of details to be done there and a lot of different type of law. So I think that that would be important. And if we can get a company on board to do that, or if we ask around through the municipal league, we could ask Robert's opinion, what he thinks he might have some options. But I think we need to be looking further than just for Collins. I think, you know, some of these people might have to be found in the Denver area. So I think we just need to open it up to to make sure that we have the the best person for the job.
I think I totally agree with everything you just said, Aaron. And I should, I was going to say it at the end, but since you already started it. Robert, thank you. I know it's been nine years and you've done an incredibly great job. And and I know everybody on this council appreciates it. So why don't I why don't I throw, I I heard that and and so here's let's throw this out and beat it around. So I think what we as a council do is is research a good search firm to look for the best qualified firm or individual to hire for our legal services. And I know CML has a whole long list of people that they can say, here are people that will do a good job for your search. do a good job for your search. And I, I, so that would be the case. And you, you might have some too, right, Wes?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would automatically reach out to CML, it'd be probably my.
Okay, so same answer. I will throw this out is I did ask, what's his name? Gort, Drew, Drew Gorch, he's the guy that's doing our town manager search. And, and he wanted to do the town legal search too. I would prefer not doing it that way, but I, I'm throwing it, I'm throwing out what he said and, and saying, you guys want to go the same route? He was a lawyer, he is a lawyer, by the way. And he was the lawyer for.
I think it's Glenwood Springs or the county or that county there.
It's the county in Glenwood, Garfield County. And so he was the attorney there for three years and did some stuff like that.
Do we get a bundle discount on his services?
Well, I, so first off, the, you know, all I did was listen. So I'm sort of throwing out what I heard and seeing before I go on the next step, what you guys want to do. Yes, Rick?
We put out an RFP for headhunter to look at the town manager position. Of the six people that applied for that, I think, as I recall, at least four, probably five of them also have done recent searches for legal counsel. That's, so if we put out a request for an RFP right now for a headhunter, probably the same six or seven are going to apply, I, I would believe. Because they do from town engineer, Don, hold your seat, town engineer to legal, to town manager, they, they all do it all kind of deal. So I, my brother would be just to go ahead and put out an RFP again and ask for people that are interested in leading the search. We know what it's going to cost us. It costs us about $18,000 to $22,000.
I think the one we settled on was 19.
What do you get for that? You get somebody that'll make sure that the trains run on time. You get a list. You end up with a list of candidates. And then you've got the ability to use their expertise to say, you look at our town. I can tell you from where I come from, from the legislature, the governor's office, I highly favor an in-house attorney. Even if that means that they need a secretarial support, so they need a secretary and maybe paralegal access at a certain level. I just think it's economical and I think at this point, we're right on that gap that Robert had talked about where sooner or later the town's going to want to go in that direction anyway. And ideally, you try to find a person that would want to be here for the next 10 years and provide the background like you've been able to provide of being able to explain a little the history as well, it's the legal advice as well, so.
So I'm not trying to get a hold ahead of the council, but let me just throw out what I think I'm hearing everyone say and go is that let's identify, well, here'd be my suggestion that two of us in the count, just like we did with the town manager, where Rick and I went and did the RFP and then came back and said, here's the different groups, here's our recommendation, which one do you want to do back to the council? And then the council gave the go-ahead to go ahead and hire the company that we did. And so what, I, I think that worked pretty good. And so is, and, and I'm going to flip it just so we have new people doing it. You know, Lisa, Brett, or Aaron, would you be interested in being one of the two to assist in, in prepping up that RFP? Or assist in, yeah, prepping up the RFP to get a headhunter group? And I think Wes, you can help probably pretty well with that.
Sure.
And so, and identify CML, I mean, Wes knows the CML, as you said, Rick, we know five firms that all will do it. And the ones that sent us back, they were all very impressive. And so would you, one of, two of you three be interested in heading up an RFP process to come back to the council with a recommendation for, I'm going to call for better, lack of term, a headhunter group for the law services that we have?
I'm looking at Aaron too, and he doesn't know I'm looking at him, but.
Yeah, I can't tell what's going on there. You guys are about not even an inch tall, so.
I, I would be interested if someone else doesn't want to do it. Otherwise, if the two of them want to do it, I'm fine with that as well.
Aaron?
I just picked up another committee today.
I know. So I, I wasn't, I wasn't trying to press. I knew you, because you said you had such a strong interest in it, I wanted to make sure that you had the opportunity if you wanted to.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
This is just the RFP for the headhunter firm only?
Only.
Yeah, I'd be fine jumping on that.
Okay. And you don't have to. I mean, I'd do it or Rick could probably do it again too. So, but, but I'm just trying to pass it around.
Let me explain the time commitment here.
Yeah.
They put out the request, that's not a time commitment as far as with us, as far as the council positions. The time commitment, if you get six applications back, I think we owe it to whoever applies to at least give them a phone interview or a conversation. And I think we spent from 30 to 40 minutes with.
Thirty to 40 minutes each one.
Which each one and then came in with recommendations for you. These guys are pros, their resumes all look great and that, but it just, what kind of gut feeling you get. And I, I bet you we get the same ones in again, kind of thing. So I, I like the lead that the mayor's taken of getting some new blood involved in the thing, just so you've got the ability to go through it. I think that's important. I just don't want anybody in the dark.
And just so you know, I'm happy to do it again, but I'm, but I sort of echo Rick's deal. I, I don't, I think it's good, everybody sort of sees the process and feels comfortable with it. But, but again.
And if it's two other people, you might come back at, you think the same headhunter that's doing the other search is the best.
Yeah.
Choice.
Because he'll put a bid in.
And I think that's important because then you've talked to the other ones and get the same feel we would have kind of.
And I'm not being that altruistic with my time, but I'm retired. You guys are working 40 and 50 hours a week and I'm sitting there playing tiddlywinks. So it's okay to, to dump it on me if you want. So, but, but on the other side, I sure want to give you guys all first choice. So Brett, I think it's up to you because Aaron says, and I, we just assigned him a committee, so he's, he's overflown. Lisa, you would like to do it?
I would, I'd be happy to.
Yeah, I'd be fine.
Okay, so while Brett and Lisa be head up, Wes, I, I direct you to, to help them with the RFP for, you guys, let's see. You have, Robert, the one that we sent out for the town manager, I think. We probably do two, don't we, Rick? Can we send it? No, I can't send it to two. Could you send to Lisa and Rick the RFP that we sent out for the town manager? Because it's got to be somewhat similar. And, and then you had that really good one from Milliken, I thought, that.
Yeah. So what I'll do with your permission, just because we're on a short track too, but hopefully by the end of January is I'll, I'll, I'll ask Robert to CC me and then I'll huddle with the two council liaisons, probably Paul, Susan, and help me pretty quick so we can get that thing done and send it out. We probably won't just leave it as long as we did the last time. We'll probably crunch it and say, hey, if you guys want this, you need to move, give us a proposal.
Not give them two weeks.
Of course.
Yeah.
And then just kind of try to get it back in front of the house.
Yeah, and, and for guidance, I would hope, and I think the council agrees with me, that we would leave our options open as far as firm, individual firm, or an in-house person.
Okay, okay.
Great, great discussion. You, okay, thank you. I was just going to ask you, Aaron, way to beat me to it. No, good job. Hey, Aaron, first off, thank you so much for taking the time, you know, and, and it's very conscientious of you to be concerned about all our health and, and quarantining yourself. So thank you for doing that.
You bet, yep. I think everything's looking good. The boyfriend tested negative, but we're still waiting on the daughter. So I want to be in the clear then I can see you all again.
Great. And again, I want to reiterate, Robert, we appreciate all the great work that you've done and everyone on the council definitely, I know, agrees with that, reiterates it, as does Aaron in the virtual world.
Let's thank Don too.
Excuse me?
Let's thank Don too, because Don's not here because of quarantine as well, so.
Oh, yeah, both Don and Brian. So, yeah, Brian and, and Don, thank you so much for not trying to infect us all. I appreciate that.
You're very welcome.
As does everybody else here. Any other comments, questions, things we need to discuss? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Wait, 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 I gotta do, I know. So, Robert, I'm going to give it to you and you take it from here.
Sure. So next time I'm on the agenda is an executive session for the purposes of receiving legal advice pursuant to 24-6-4024B as it relates to the town's rights and obligations in connection with potential litigation. Is there a motion to enter into that session?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
I would want to make sure, is there a way we can keep, I would recommend we keep one staff person on and put Aaron back on the system? And if we can meet in here, it would be helpful, but then he could stay on.